Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Daniel Boone Area School District Committee of the Hall and Special Voting Meeting for May 14th. Before we do have our saxophonist here, but before we actually get started, if I could ask, we were not at our home meeting place last meeting. We were away at BCTC, so I'd like to ask everybody just to kind of reflect and, you know, we lost a Daniel Boone student, Maverick Blackston, at a very young age, one of our middle school students. And, you know, traditionally, we'll have a moment of silence for Maverick and, you know, in reflecting on Maverick's life, I'd like everybody to just kind of take a minute, reflect, and actually be amazed by a kid that has lived a life probably more than a lot of us here today in his zeal for life. So if you'd all just take a minute and reflect upon Maverick's life. Thank you. Now, kicking off with, I think it's AEC, is it the Saxophone Ensemble? We're going to do the pledge, we're going to have a song from them. Are we going to do a song first, folks? Why don't we do your musical piece first, and then we'll go into the pledge.
(Singing) I have sixteen different saxophones. So with spring sports, Panharbia, everybody together.
Do we have one more, or is that it?
Sure.
Okay.
You've got lots.
Okay. That was great. Thank you very much. If everybody could rise, please, and we'll pledge to the flag. You guys can start us off if you want. I heard you all ready back there. That was great. Thank you very much. If everybody could rise, please, and we'll pledge to the flag. You guys can start us off if you want. I heard you all ready back there.
(Singing)
Alrighty, I was going back and forth as to whether to do the voting meeting first or committee of the hall. Actually, Mr. Wolf would do the committee of the hall first, since we have a few folks here to go over things on that, so instead of hanging them up for the voting meeting. So we'll do the committee of the hall first. If you could, do your roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Attair. Ms. Albright?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Derso?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Piska?
Here.
Mr. Wolf here.
Mr. Jaska?
Here.
Ms. Olsson?
Here.
Here. Yep, thank you. Public participation is on the inside cover of your handout. If everybody hasn't signed in the back yet, please do so. Are there any agenda edits on our committee of the hall? Okay, the roll call being the second session following the meeting with personnel negotiations, and actually, we do have the one legal item on here for a outplacement, so I'd probably add legal to that as well. Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, this week? Okay, new mics. All right, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and the school board provided apples for all the teachers and staff in the buildings, trying to be healthy this year. Once again, I want to thank all the teachers for what they do, and the staff for what they do on behalf of students. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the TSA, students. Are you in the house? Raise your hands. All right, come on down. Don't be shy, come on down. Not so close, right there.
Come down, not too close.
Not too close. All right, so, can you tell us where you placed and what your area of specialty is? Please, one at a time, but still by height. Shortest to tallest.
Don't be afraid to use the microphone in front of you.
Come closer to the microphone. You'll be back. It's on?
It is on.
It's on. Say your name.
Hi, I'm Amara Michael. I play second in children's stories, and, yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Hello, I'm Amara Michael. I play second, place in children's stories for states, and, yeah.
Is there Natalie Brown and Mia Pizzo with you?
Yeah, they are on my team, but they aren't here.
So then it's just you, standing alone, representing the group.
Proud.
Proud. Okay. Next.
Hi, I'm Alexa Cavalletti. I play second in promotion, promotion marketing, and I play first in logo design.
Hello, I'm Sydney Sheppo, and I play second for, not second, third for website design.
I'm Lexi Laverney, and I play first for digital photography and second for logo design.
I'm, and I play second for career prep and fifth for CCI, channeling communications.
I'm Brianna Mathenmeyer. I play tenth for biotechnology issues and third for teacher technology teacher.
Hi, I'm Kayla Vitaboli, and I play second in CAD foundations and third in technical design.
Don't go away, don't go away. I have a question. How do you choose what you're going to do? Because they're so unique.
Well, so, pretty much what I do is, I look through all of them, and then if they sound cool, I like put like a little more heart next to it, and then I have Ms. Holman like go over what you need to do for all of them, and then if they sound interesting, I do them.
Okay.
For the high school, we go by seniorities, so my first two years at TSA, I got whatever was left from what the juniors and seniors they picked, and then now being a junior, I got to kind of go for the better competition, as we call it, and pick what I actually wanted to do.
So let me ask you, since you got the leftovers when you were a freshman, don't you feel, I mean, how did you feel? Did you think maybe one day when I'm a junior or senior, I'll let the freshmen have a better crack at it because I didn't like how that felt? Or did you just go, you know what, when I'm a junior, I'm really going to stick it to the freshmen?
I wish I was like that, but I kind of went to the eighth graders and said, be prepared to get whatever's left.
Pay your dues.
Yeah, you got to pay your dues. All right, well, we have some certificates for you.
I have a question. Do any boys participate in the TSA?
Yes.
They just didn't make the cut.
They hated playing when they were twelve.
For what it's worth, our high school team this year, there were nine of you, is that correct? And our representation was all girls from the high school this year.
Good job.
Did the TSA conflict with prom?
It did.
Mr. Big Night, we got to plan better for that. What's?
We have such a big prom, and we won't face the whole system. That seems very slight.
The people that were on the bus that came back, they got home, they got home in time when they were doing hair on the bus.
We both had that issue, hair on the bus.
Hair on the bus?
Yeah.
I had that issue too.
But he leaves the hair on the bus, doesn't he?
Congratulations.
All right, so, come on, just do it there.
(Singing)
If you want us to get back out, you don't want us.
Get in there.
I would have towered my head by it.
Okay, is there Benjamin Spots here? Can't see. Ah, he's here. Okay, limp one up.
Did I read Sasha?
I wasn't sure if you could make it. See, now, the funny part is, the story, you run and drive so fast, but now you're on crutches. Okay. So let me explain who this person is. I've been hearing rumors for about a year that Daniel Boone has a drag racing team, but I couldn't find them.
Nice school, every day, dismissal.
Okay, a legal drag racing team, until one day my son told me, hey, I know a guy who has a Trans Am who races cars. I need a car to race them. And I said, you can't drive my car anymore. But then, at the musical ensemble, they were sitting behind me, and he whispered, and his father whispered in my ear, and my daughter said, hey, that's the guy with the Trans Am. So I turned, and now I know who races the Trans Am at, what's this place called? It's Maple Grove, Maple Grove Raceway, and they're going to Echo, New Jersey. Well, I guess if he can drive. So tell us, you're the racecar driver for Daniel Boone?
Yes.
Won't drive a bus?
Yes, I represented Daniel Boone at the high school nationals at Maple Grove Raceway, and I won, so now I go to the division championships at Echo.
All right, so. Question, because I was talking to your father, and we have the same, well, back in the olden days, racing on Front Street down in Philly, but how did you get involved in the legal drag racing?
My dad just took me to the track when I was like two years old, and he bought me a T-shirt, and that's what started it all.
A T-shirt?
Yep. Had a junior drag skirt on it, and my dad said, well, we'll do that someday. And then I turned eight years old, and that's when it started.
Okay. Can you drive with your hamstring? Messed up?
Yes.
Okay.
I raced on Saturday with a torn hamstring, and I took second place.
Well, it's finally great to meet you, because you're like an urban legend to me. It's like actually having Bigfoot stand up in front of me and tell me how he was feeling. But, thank you, and it's great meeting your dad at the musical ensemble. You heard me play the sax, which is pretty bad. I was going to play tonight, but I chickened out, so I was in a car. But, once again, let us know when you're going to race, and I'm sure we can come out, especially Maple Grove, and we can all get T-shirts and support you.
Dismissed, keep one on, yes, if they want to leave. Is that, is that not the case?
No way. I want people to stay.
What are we going to do now?
We're going to do Thompson.
All right, folks, we're going to now have a presentation by Thompson and Associates on masonry at BEC, get into the core of our meeting. So while Mr. Thompson's getting ready, if by chance you wanted to sneak out the back, now would be a good time to do it. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to stay, we'd love to have you, so.
He's the first one out. He's quick, he's fast. Well, you heard his, Anthony had a track meet. He runs like four, I think it's four hundred or? Four hundred hurdles, yeah. Wow. You ready? Yeah? Need a computer? Do you all have a computer?
Paper.
No, you need a computer, you need a laptop. Can you use your laptop? Oh, great, you can get it? Okay. This is cutting into your three minutes. Okay. Jump over the price.
Everybody get a copy of the PowerPoint? Everybody's had a chance to, you guys had a chance to leaf through it.
Should.
My husband is, my husband is sixty-eight, he's sixty-nine, that one.
Well, it's just that it works the kind of work you're working on.
Last year.
Well, she probably only said a half. There's quite a few. Really.
Paper still over?
Troll, D.
Is the paper still over, the flood?
Oh, it is.
If not, then I would like to talk to you.
Did you plug it in?
Yeah.
(Singing)
All right. All right. I was going back and forth as to whether to do the voting meeting first or committee of the hall. Actually, Mr. Wolf would do the committee of the hall first, since we have a few folks here to go over things on that, so instead of hanging them up for the voting meeting. So we'll do the committee of the hall first. If you could, do your roll call, please.
Yes, Mr. Attair. Ms. Albright?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Derso?
Here.
Mr. Strobel?
Here.
Mr. Piska?
Here.
Mr. Wolf here.
Mr. Jaska? Here.
Ms. Olsson?
Here.
Here. Yep, thank you. Public participation is on the inside cover of your handout. If everybody hasn't signed in the back yet, please do so. Are there any agenda edits on our committee of the hall? Okay, the roll call being the second session following the meeting with personnel negotiations, and actually, we do have the one legal item on here for a outplacement, so I'd probably add legal to that as well. Superintendent's report, please.
Okay, this week? Okay, new mics. All right, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and the school board provided apples for all the teachers and staff in the buildings, trying to be healthy this year. Once again, I want to thank all the teachers for what they do, and the staff for what they do on behalf of students. Also, I'd like to acknowledge the TSA, students, are you in the house? Raise your hands. All right, come on down. Don't be shy, come on down. Not so close, right there.
Come down, not too close.
Not too close. All right, so, can you tell us where you placed and what your area of specialty is? Please, one at a time, but still by height. Shortest to tallest.
Don't be afraid to use the microphone in front of you.
Come closer to the microphone. You'll be back. It's on?
It is on.
It's on. Say your name.
Hi, I'm Amara Michael. I play second in children's stories, and, yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Hello, I'm Amara Michael. I play second, place in children's stories for states, and, yeah.
Is there Natalie Brown and Mia Pizzo with you?
Yeah, they are on my team, but they aren't here.
So then it's just you, standing alone, representing the group.
Proud.
Proud. Okay. Next.
Hi, I'm Alexa Cavalletti. I play second in promotion, promotion marketing, and I play first in logo design.
Hello, I'm Sydney Sheppo, and I play second for, not second, third for website design.
I'm Lexi Laverney, and I play first for digital photography and second for logo design.
I'm, and I play second for career prep and fifth for CCI, channeling communications.
I'm Brianna Mathenmeyer. I play tenth for biotechnology issues and third for teacher technology teacher.
Hi, I'm Kayla Vitaboli, and I play second in CAD foundations and third in technical design.
Don't go away, don't go away. I have a question. How do you choose what you're going to do? Because they're so unique.
Well, so, pretty much what I do is, I look through all of them, and then if they sound cool, I like put like a little more heart next to it, and then I have Ms. Holman like go over what you need to do for all of them, and then if they sound interesting, I do them.
Okay. Okay.
For the high school, we go by seniorities, so my first two years at TSA, I got whatever was left from what the juniors and seniors they picked, and then now being a junior, I got to kind of go for the better competition, as we call it, and pick what I actually wanted to do.
So let me ask you, since you got the leftovers when you were a freshman, don't you feel, I mean, how did you feel? Did you think maybe one day when I'm a junior or senior, I'll let the freshmen have a better crack at it because I didn't like how that felt? Or did you just go, you know what, when I'm a junior, I'm really going to stick it to the freshmen?
I wish I was like that, but I kind of went to the eighth graders and said, be prepared to get whatever's left.
Pay your dues.
Yeah, you got to pay your dues. All right, well, we have some certificates for you.
I have a question. Do any boys participate in the TSA?
Yes.
Okay.
They just didn't make the cut.
They hated playing when they were twelve.
For what it's worth, our high school team this year, there were nine of you, is that correct? And our representation was all girls from the high school this year.
Good job.
Did the TSA conflict with prom?
It did.
It did. Mr. Big Night, we got to plan better for that. What's?
We have such a big prom, and we won't face the whole system. That seems very slight.
The people that were on the bus that came back, they got home, they got home in time when they were doing hair on the bus.
We both had that issue, hair on the bus. Yeah.
Hair on the bus?
Yeah.
I had that issue too.
But he leaves the hair on the bus, doesn't he?
Congratulations.
All right, so, come on, just do it there.
(Singing)
If you want us to get back out, you don't want us.
Get in there.
I would have towered my head by it.
All right, so, here. Come on. Just do it there.
(Singing)
If you want us to get back out, you don't want us.
Get in there.
I would have towered my head by it.
All right, so, here. Come on. Just do it there.
(Singing)
Okay, is there Benjamin Spots here? Can't see. Ah, he's here. Okay, limp one up. Did I read Sasha?
I wasn't sure if you could make it. See, now, the funny part is, the story, you run and drive so fast, but now you're on crutches. Okay. So let me explain who this person is. I've been hearing rumors for about a year that Daniel Boone has a drag racing team, but I couldn't find them.
Nice school, every day, dismissal.
Okay, a legal drag racing team, until one day my son told me, hey, I know a guy who has a Trans Am who races cars. I need a car to race them. And I said, you can't drive my car anymore. But then, at the musical ensemble, they were sitting behind me, and he whispered, and his father whispered in my ear, and my daughter said, hey, that's the guy with the Trans Am. So I turned, and now I know who races the Trans Am at, what's this place called? It's Maple Grove, Maple Grove Raceway, and they're going to Echo, New Jersey. Well, I guess if he can drive. So tell us, you're the racecar driver for Daniel Boone?
Yes.
Won't drive a bus?
Yes, I represented Daniel Boone at the high school nationals at Maple Grove Raceway, and I won, so now I go to the division championships at Echo.
All right, so. Question, because I was talking to your father, and we have the same, well, back in the olden days, racing on Front Street down in Philly, but how did you get involved in the legal drag racing?
My dad just took me to the track when I was like two years old, and he bought me a T-shirt, and that's what started it all.
A T-shirt?
Yep. Had a junior drag skirt on it, and my dad said, well, we'll do that someday. And then when I turned eight years old, that's when it started.
Okay.
Can you drive with your hamstring? Messed up?
Yes.
Okay.
I raced on Saturday with a torn hamstring, and I took second place.
Well, it's finally great to meet you, because you're like an urban legend to me. It's like actually having Bigfoot stand up in front of me and tell me how he was feeling. But, thank you, and it's great meeting your dad at the musical ensemble. You heard me play the sax, which is pretty bad. I was going to play tonight, but I chickened out, so I was in a car. But, once again, let us know when you're going to race, and I'm sure we can come out, especially Maple Grove, and we can all get T-shirts and support you. Okay?
Dismissed, keep one on, yes, if they want to leave. Is that, is that not the case?
No way. I want people to stay.
What are we going to do now?
We're going to do Thompson.
All right, folks, we're going to now have a presentation by Thompson and Associates on masonry at BEC, get into the core of our meeting. So while Mr. Thompson's getting ready, if by chance you wanted to sneak out the back, now would be a good time to do it. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to stay, we'd love to have you, so.
He's the first one out. He's the first one out. He's quick, he's fast. Well, you heard his, Anthony had a track meet. He runs like four, I think it's four hundred or?
Four hundred hurdles, yeah.
Wow. You ready? Yeah? Need a computer? Do you all have a computer?
Paper.
No, you need a computer, you need a laptop. Can you use your laptop?
In case you want to get it.
Oh, great, you can get it? Okay. This is cutting into your three minutes. Okay.
(Singing)
Jump over the price.
(Singing)
I didn't go to the front. (Singing)
(Singing)
Everybody get a copy of the PowerPoint?
Everybody's had a chance to, you guys had a chance to leaf through it.
(Singing)
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 Well, it's finally great to meet you because you're like an urban legend to me. It's like Ashley having Bigfoot stand up in front of me and tell me how he was filmed. Thank you. And it's great meeting your dad at the musical ensemble. You heard me play the sax, which is pretty good. I was gonna play tonight, but I chickened out, so I was in the car. But, once again, let us know when you're going to race, and I'm sure we can come out, especially Maple Grove, and we can all get T-shirts and support you.
Alright folks, we're gonna now have a presentation by Thompson and Associates on masonry at BEC to get into the core of our meeting. So while Mr. Thompson is getting ready, if by chance you wanted to sneak out the back, now would be a good time to do it. Otherwise, you're more than welcome to stay. We'd love to have you.
He's the first one out. He's quick, he's fast. Well, you heard Anthony had a track meet. He runs, like, 400 or... You ready? Yeah? Need a computer? Do you don't have a computer? No, you need a computer. You need a laptop. Can you use your laptop? Oh, great. You can get it? Okay. This is cutting into your three minutes. Jump over the price.
Everybody get a copy of the PowerPoint? Everybody's had a chance to, you guys had a chance to leaf through it.
Is the pike still over? Is the pike still over, this flint?
Well, you all know me. I'm Jim Thompson from Thompson Associates. And I'm here this evening with Roger Durr from Whitmer Restoration. And I'm here tonight with Josh Carney. Josh Carney is our structural engineer. And the three of us have all worked together to evaluate the condition of the masonry on the Birdsboro building. And Roger put together the PowerPoint. You saw my PowerPoint the last time. And Roger's gonna give you a little more detail this evening, including some costs to fix.
Alright, first, thank you, board. Like Jim said, my name's Roger Durr, and I work for Whitmer Restoration. We have a company based in Mount Joy area. And I, masonry is absolutely all I did in my life as far as a job. I've been in bricklayer or involved in masonry ever since I was 14 years old. So I have 44 years' experience in masonry and masonry restoration. We do quite a bit investigative services, like projects like this with engineers such as Jim and Josh. And we run into a lot of things. But what we'd like to do is this is an overview of where we actually opened up the building. We opened it up in seven locations to look at conditions that we feel are gonna be similar around the building, because the construction and detailing from the original drawings is very similar. So we go into, we'll start at probe one. Probe one, two, and three is on the east side of the building. It's my east, that's what I consider east. But we'll be able to see quite a few conditions on the one side that are gonna be pretty well similar, because a lot of windows around the building. We can go to probe one, Jim. So probe one is on the third floor, and it's on the window head condition. What I'll do is you'll hear some of the, some similar things on all areas. But what we'll touch base on is things that are pertinent on damage that we see on the building, and why the building is deteriorating, and why it's, you see so much age-induced decline to the exterior veneers. First of all, is the flashing. And you can look at the flashing. The flashing is a copper, laminated asphalt-coated flashing, what they put in. And the problem with a lot of the flashing is there's so many open voids, holes in it. What we consider end dams, I don't know if a lot of people are familiar with it, but end dams is you have to put on a corner on all the flashing on the left and the right-hand side of all window and all openings that you're crossing over. So that's, the reason you do that is to contain the water within that one area and get it outside of the building. So any mortar that goes into the masonry, goes in, comes down, bits of flashing, and it has to go to the outside of the building. The problem is with the flashing, there's so many voids in it that once water gets to it, it's not coming out of the building. And what it's doing, it's going down through the open cores of the brick, down through the cavity. And that's why you see the damage and the cracking on the building. So there's a lot of deterioration with the flashing and a lot of issues with the flashing. It never came out to the face of the wall. It stayed back in. It should come out within, like, three-eighths of an inch of the face of the building unless you're using a drip edge. And a drip edge would come out where you would physically see it exposed out past the face of the wall. When we opened it up, we reviewed all the steel, the angle irons that they used to cross over all the window openings. All the angle irons are in good condition with the exception of rust on them, of which we can clean that off and put a coating on there. We can put a field coating on there that's 98% galvanized. It's a zinc coating. It's really good material, and it's just about as good as being hot-dipped. The rigid insulation that we found throughout all the open areas that we looked at, the workmanship and the placement was very, very poor. There was no adhesive. Most of the time when you put in insulation in a building like this, where you have a cavity wall situation with the insulation, you use, it's called PL300, and it's an insulation adhesive that ties it back to the masonry. There was none in place on any of the areas that we opened up, and there was large open voids where you had a lot of air infiltration that could go right in through to the building. The backup block work, concrete block was really, it was really poor workmanship as far as the placement of the block. Yeah, they just didn't put any care into cleaning the joints, making sure all the holes were filled, and the block was struck once and brushed. You can see large open voids, like in picture number three. You can see in the gray block there, you have probably a three-eighth open gap that goes right into the inside of the building. The veneer material, most of the veneer material, it was either modular brick or the eight-by-eight brick units. And there's not a lot of damage with the brick itself, with the exception of where steels were sitting directly on steel, and then you see quite a bit of cracking. But overall, the veneer is in pretty good shape. Some of the other notes that I made on this area, the engineer analysis, as far as Josh taking a look at all the steel, the steel, like I said, was in good shape. All we had to do was take care of the rust. One of the problems is any time that you put in any steel element, where you cross over a window, where you have a relief iron, anything like that, you should have a soft joint material on the underside of that steel. What they did was that steel is like bullet-type on the masonry, and you start a masonry right on top of it. So any movement whatsoever is cracking the masonry. You should have a soft joint in there with a caulk joint that allows for a differential movement on it. So that's more or less probe one. Jim, we can go to two. Probe two is gonna be on the jams of all windows. Not a lot, there's not a lot in this area, but it's, it's just, I couldn't believe it when I opened it up. You can see on picture six, seven, and eight, what you see is just mortar just packed in behind the veneer brick. You just never, ever see this, never. I think in all the years that I've been involved in construction, I never saw anything like this. But what you typically see is, especially with the age of the school and what was built, they should've had it treated like a two-by-four, even a double-two-by-four along the jams that they could've had for a nailer. So when they went and put the windows in, they had a nailer that was built in the cavity, and they could've screwed that window right directly into that treated piece of lumber. And the insulation should've came all the way over on the top of that treated lumber right over to the window with the brick returning. But what they decided to do was just pack it solid with mortar. And it's hard to see in these pictures, but I could zoom in on just about any area that we opened up. And all the connections from the window into that area where the mortar is, all the screws and stuff were rusted off. So, and why it was, was because of the amount of moisture that was generated from all that mortar that was packed in that cavity. So the veneer anchors, the insulation was non-existent. And like I said, I talked briefly about the treated lumber, and that's usually put in there, like I said, for a nailer in there to fasten your windows. So we go to probe three, and probe three's located in the same area, third floor, and it's a sill condition. And this is underneath the louver, which louver is placed there for the univentilators that are in each of the classrooms on that side. So when we opened that up, there's a lot of things going on here. There's actually a relief iron that goes around the building. So the age of this school, a lot of the architects and engineers believe that every single floor, if you went up three floors, you had to have two relief irons in there to carry the weight. The foundation could only carry one floor of the masonry on the outside, which is not true. But what they did was, if you look on picture 10, up in the right-hand corner, there's a steel angle that's built into the masonry wall there. So that goes all the way around the building at that location. So that's designed, like, you could actually go in, if it's properly designed, like it shows on here as far as the steel angle, you could start the brickwork on that second floor and go from the second floor up to the roof without your masonry on the bottom. The structural engineer designed that to carry the load on that entire second floor. So with that said, the angle iron itself, there's no soft joint underneath it. It's not continuous all the way around the building. It stops at every univentilator. It stops at every vertical column. It's not continuous on the outside corners of the building, and I'll show you that on some other slides. But their idea put it in, they decided to put it in, but it was not put in correctly. The location of it, it should've been like an inch, an inch, an inch, a quarter back from the face of the masonry. And it varied all over the building. Some places, that relief iron is right out flush with the brickwork, which you have steel exposed on the outside, which is bad, and it has to get repaired. So again, with the relief iron, I'll go down through there. The flashing, first the flashing was pretty well installed identical to the other probes that we had. Large voids in it. There was no end dams. Like, if you look on photo eleven, on the lower left-hand corner, you can see we have the flashing pulled up, and that comes down and laced on that relief iron there. But you can physically see on the left-hand side, there's no end dam there. So any mortar that goes into, through the brickwork, comes down to that flashing, it'll run to the left or the right, and it's going right into the wall cavity because there's no end dam from stopping that to going in. Photo eleven there, you can see a large open gap alongside the univentilator. So any driving rain will go right in there, right into the cavity. All the angle irons were in good shape with the exception of rusting on it. So the rusting has to be cleaned off and then coating again on it. The brick veneer anchors, we didn't find any brick veneer anchors in this area whatsoever. So there are anchors that are holding the brick, but in the areas where we opened it up, there was, we didn't run into any there. But we'll show you the conditions of some of the anchors at other areas. But everything's pretty well similar in that area, as we saw in others, as far as deterioration and the reason for the water infiltration into the building. We can go to probe four. Probe four, four is located on the first floor at the univentilators. And what we did was we opened up an area in between the head of the first floor and sill of the second floor, like, right around where that univentilator is. So first of all, the structural steel, like what you had at the second floor, they put an angle all the way around that building, and they used that as a pour stop. So when it poured the concrete on the second floor, it comes out to the end, and they considered it a pour stop. So that was all rusted, and of course, a relief iron committed that area. So there was a lot of steel going on there, and there was nothing continuous throughout the building at this location. As you can see up on photo number 14, up in the top right-hand corner, that angle is in really, really good shape. And that's a hot-dip galvanized angle, unlike some of the other ones that we ran into. So that's in really good shape with very, very little rusty on it whatsoever. Why they coated that more so than some of the other ones that we saw, I can't answer that question. But on photo 16, in the lower right-hand corner, they consider that a wire tie. And what it is, it's a wire that's welded onto the structural steel. And then you should have triangles that come off that to tie your masonry back to the backup substrate. Where we opened it up, there was no ties in that area. The wire tie was there, but there was no angles that were, or no triangles that were holding the brickwork back. Again, we had issues with flashing. As you can see in photo 14, they didn't even install flashing there on the, on that relief iron that's going across there. Just like they picked in choose areas of where to put the flashing, when they did put it in, it wasn't put in properly. And you can see on photo 15, in the lower right-hand corner, the insulation was just put in. It wasn't cut to fit the opening. You can see there's about a six-inch void in the top of the insulation up to the underside of that univentilator, of which the air is going straight into the building. And in the top right-hand corner, you can look at the insulation there, and they cut out those little square holes to receive those connectors. And they just decided they, where they did put them in, they didn't put them in correctly. In some places, they cut the hole for them and didn't put them in at all. So that's about it for that probe. Probe four, probe five is on the same elevation, and it's on the first floor, and there's, I think there's three bump outs on that side. And the entire masonry, everything is bumped out, where you have a little extension from the inside of the room. Again, here, there's an awful lot going on here, and it's, a lot of it's with the flashing. Again, if you look on photo 19, on the bottom left, you can see where the flashing never came out to the face of the brick. You can see it.
Tell me you interrupted, but I mean, you have seen most of this from Mr. Thompson when he did his presentation last night? So I mean, he's been over most of these items? I mean, I don't, can we jump to the recommendation part, or is there something else that we should add?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, Jim, how about if we go, go to the probe? Yes, open that up, right? And we can zoom in on that. Jim, did you go over with them as far as the condition of the ties?
Just touch on the ties. Review the condition of the ties.
Okay, will you look on, well, two areas there, and I don't know, I'll go briefly on the left. On the picture on the lower left-hand corner, they installed the flashing originally all the way around the gymnasium wall. And then they came back and they put a new roof on it. And when they did the new roof, they raised the flashing higher on the outside, the counterflashing. So now any mortar that goes into that building in that area is going down, it's trapping, it's trapped in there and it's going directly into the building. It's not coming out of roof level. But on the lower right-hand corner, you can see the ties, and the steel on the ties is roughly a quarter of an inch diameter. There's a lot of areas where we opened it up, where we looked at the ties, that they were located so close to the face of the brick that the moisture that was going through the mortar was rusting all the brick connections. So on the gymnasium itself, on all four elevations, that entire area there has to be tied back with alternate anchors because of the condition of the anchors out there now. So we can go, Jim, we can go to the recommendations.
How tall was that wall from the top of where that new flashing is to where the roof line was?
From roof to roof?
Yeah, from where the, where you can see they put the new flashing in, 25 went up to the top. How thick of a wall, how tall was that?
From the finished roof to where the top of our opening is right there, is probably only 18 inches.
No, I meant like, if the wall, like, you did 25 and you look straight up, how tall is that wall?
Oh, that wall's probably, well, I have my notes here, but it's probably 20, 22 feet in the neighborhood. So we can go to the recommendations. Okay, the recommendation options that I have, that I attached, I have 16 of them. The first recommendation is caulking at all the control joints, relief irons, and all the aluminum frames. So every window, door, every relief iron, control joints, we recommend to be re-caulked. And with that said, there's gonna be quite a few additional control joints that are gonna be cut into the building. Because right now, the way that you look at a building right now, and look at the way that architects and engineers looked at them 25 years ago and 30 years ago, expansion and contraction of the building has drastically changed, and we see so much movement on the corners of buildings. So with Jim and Josh, Josh's recommendations, we're gonna install quite a few additional control joints around the entire building. So that would be number one. Number two recommendation would be to remove and replace the brick at all flashes at all the relief irons. So any of the areas where we have multiple floors of masonry, what we would do is we would go in and open up where all those relief irons go around the building. We would take one course of brick out below the relief iron, take three courses of brick out above the relief iron. And then we, then we would put in the correct soft joint, treat all the steel first, put in the correct soft joint on the underside of all the steel, put in the correct flashing, a workable flashing system, repair the insulation in that area, and relay the veneer. At every area where we do, or do install new flashing, we would put in stainless steel drip that you would physically see on the outside of the building that would go continuous all the way around that area. Recommendation three would be on all rising walls, any place where you have a rising wall, on the gymnasium, classroom sections, any area where you have brickwork rising above roof level, we would cut out all that brickwork, four courses of brick around the building, and we would replace that flashing, install it correctly. We'd put in support underneath the flashing. We'd put in two type flashing components in there, one being stainless steel drip or a stainless steel two-piece condition that would take care of your roof also. And then a membrane flashing that would tie back to your backup system. The fourth one would be all the window heads, window heads and doors, we would cut out the masonry at the bottom and install new flashing, drip edge, end dams, everything the way that it's supposed to be. And with putting all this new flashing in, you have, anything that gets through that masonry that gets to the flashing is coming out, it's not going into the building. What we can't control is where mortar would go in through the brickwork, and it would bridge to the backup where we're not opening up areas as far as moisture getting to the backup material. That's a condition that we can't control. Number five would be repair all window jams and install new treated block all the way around the window. So any time that, so we would take all that mortar out on all the windows, univentilators, get all that out of there, put in treated lumber around the frames, redo the insulation, and lay the new veneer into where it is now. Recommendation six would be to remove all the univentilators. My understanding through Mr. Thompson is that the univentilators are not gonna be used anymore. So we would remove the grills from the outside on all of them, infill the opening where the original univentilator went into the inside of the building with backup concrete block, reflash all those areas, and then lay veneer block there to match the surrounding conditions. Recommendation seven would be all sill flashing at the univentilators where they were, windows, any other openings where you have grills, anything like that, we would have all new flashing at the sill conditions on all of them. So we would open everything up, replace what flashing was there, and relay the veneer. Recommendation eight would be new caulking at all the perimeter conditions around the building, any place where you have concrete, asphalt that comes back and joins the building itself, the vertical walls, everything would be cut out, and you'd have a proper seal material in there that would take, would stop any water infiltration from running down along the foundation. Flashing, or option number nine would be to install new stainless steel flashing on all site walls. So the site walls that you have now, mortar's just gushing through them, and they're gonna blow all those walls apart. You can see it on the top right-hand corner. That's why you see the dark joints, the bed joints of the mortar. That's mortar that's just laying in there. So we would put stainless steel flashing and membrane flashing on the tops of all those walls, and then put a precast cap on it, and then all the precast cap would be caulked to. Option number 10 would be, 10 and 10A would be to re-point 50% of all the veneer as far as both the eight-by-eight units and the modular brick. So the eight-by-eight units, naturally, there's less work footage with them, but it's very, very expensive. But with your repointing, what happens with your repointing, any area, like, if any of the guys ever did any concrete work, when you're finishing concrete, you're trying to work like a slurry up to the top surface, and that's to work like a slurry up to the top surface and that's where you finish with your concrete. It's the same concept as far as striking mortar joints. When you're, when you're laying the brick, you're striking the mortar joints with a metal tool, striker, and it brings a smooth slurry to the grout out to the face of the joint. What happens over time is they usually say between thirty and forty years of order. Joints in any building is good for thirty to forty years, especially in our climate where we have so many freeze saw cycles and so much moisture and changes in temperature. Once you lose that slurry condition on the outside of the brick, you have a sanded finish on the joints. And what happens is water will fly through those joints and into the inside of the building. So it's really important, there's a lot of areas that are protected where you don't have the driving rings and stuff and you don't have to re-point one hundred percent of the building. But fifty percent, both for the eight by eights and the modulars are pretty close. Option number eleven is to install new base flashing all the way around the building. So any place, especially in the classroom area, we have exposed walls there where the, where you have interaction with the base flashing. So the base flashing goes all the way around the building. If we can install new flashing at that location, it will stop any water from getting down into the foundation in any place where you would have a finished floor inside the building that would be lower than your outside flashing. You can see what it's like in the lower right-hand corner, it's just, it's just loading up on all that masonry and our freeze saw cycle just blows it apart. And anytime you have core brick, like you can see in the little right-hand corner, water will get down through and get into those round cores of the brick. And then the weakest part of the brick, once it starts freezing, it'll blow the face of the brick off and that's when you can see so much damage. Option number twelve, we would recommend to put a heel fix anchor in the gymnasium walls in the four elevations. And heel fix anchors are stainless steel, roughly a ten inch long rod. And what it would do is we would drill a joint between the head and the bed joint on the brick veneer on the outside. So we would drill roughly a three-eighth joint, or a three-eighth hole in through and into the backup block. And then we would drive a ten inch stainless steel spiral anchor in through the brick and into the backup block. And what it would do is tighten as it goes in and it would tie the brick to the backup block. So it saves a lot of remedial work on the building. But you can see on the lower right-hand picture that the tie is just about gone. So the structural aspect of what's holding that brick up on that gymnasium is not real good right now, but the heel fix anchors will take care of that condition. What we would do is we'd have Jim and Josh look at it and then we'd design a grid pattern to put the heel fix anchors in and we could, we could take care of that condition. Let me see where I'm at. Option number thirteen, remove and replace all backup and veneer, masonry, insulation, flashing, and roofs. That's again, on the bump out areas, those small roofs, we'd replace all those because the counterflashing up on the top of them are not correct, they're not pitched correctly. Water's laying in around the face flashing, it's getting into the inside of the building. So we, we would replace the backup block, like all the, all the brick in those bump outs would come off. The backup block would come out of there. We'd take fireproofing off the columns, treat the columns, and then reinstall the backup grouting, rebar, everything that would go with the backup. And then we'd properly locate control joints that would go completely through the masonry and do those areas correctly. Now, option number fourteen, remove and replace damaged brick. And we'll have, you know, there's damaged brick around, you know, in the building, not a lot, but we'd just put an allowance towards that. And then we'd have contingency there for ground protection, aerial lifts, swing stage scaffolding, conventional scaffolding, and then equipment, stuff that we would use for... But there's a lot of, there's a lot of work that has to be done, but in my opinion, the building is actually, the building is actually well-built, it's just the workmanship itself in different, really, really critical areas were very poor. Flashing insulation, we see it all the time, the flashing insulation is just horrendous. The placement of the insulation, anything, anything that they had, workmanship qualities that they should have had in place, they didn't. So they didn't have a good superintendent in the first place who ever built the building. So I'm ready for questions.
We have our structural engineer, Josh Arney, here. We have questions for the mason or for me. I think the, we'll just talk a little bit about next steps as we would need some direction at this point if you wanted further input from our team. You have pricing on some significant mechanical work on the building and you have some pricing on some significant site work for this building. When you add to this, the work on masonry is, we recommended back in the beginning of the year...
With the wires on top.
With the wires on top.
We recommended at the beginning, that we knit this together with the other work that needs to be done and give you some recommendations on some pre-schematic options for this building that would help kind of package this into a package of renovations that would preserve the building, yes, but also to talk about what would be the disposition of this building going forward. Mr. Dur mentioned eliminating the unit ventilators as an example. Our mechanical engineer recommended a system that would have a dedicated outside air system and it wouldn't take the fresh air through the classroom walls, but would just deliver heating and cooling in the classrooms and then would deliver dehumidified air from the corridor. And that would give us the opportunity to eliminate a lot of those exterior louvers and improve the, I know we have some environmental problems in the building with moisture control and you can see a lot of moisture gets into the building now. This would help with the moisture, but the dehumidification would be key. And we would knit that all together and what we were recommending was some pre-schematic options to present to the board with kind of comprehensive pricing, what would it all look like? So in terms of next steps, in my mind, that's a logical next step, but you've got a lot of information to think about here.
Mr. Thompson, I have a question for you. What, I understand, I think everyone's prepared that a building of this age is going to have some maintenance needs. What was very disappointing, quite frankly, is to hear that it was substandard work in many facets and, you know, for the price of one point, I think it was nine, one point nine million, even the district at this time doesn't have that type of money. So I guess my question is if you had to, if we had to focus on two, three, seven within a budget of, you know, something that'd be determined, just say like a half a million dollars, what could we stabilize the building and then, you know, chip away at it over the years as we can assign money?
Josh, if you're the structural guy, is, you were the one that sounded the alarm on the brick ties in particular, where would you start from a safety perspective?
Not that I'm not loud, but...
Safety first.
Safety first. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think that is an accurate assessment that you would want to address the safety issues, but I think the struggle you're going to have is as soon as you start to open things up, that, you know, it's not something that lends itself to doing little bits and pieces unless you're doing it in sections of the building. But in other words, if you're going to start on one part of the building, you want to finish that part of the building and address the issues. There's, if you think of it, there's three things going on. There's not keeping water out, there's not getting water out that gets in, and then there's this global issue of the movement of the building. The water's probably the most significant enemy at this point. And the gymnasium is a good example where the water has really started to destroy the brick ties. Once you lose those, if you picture a brick wall that's pre-standing without something tying it back to something more substantial, you know, you start to, you start to run a risk if there's a, if there's a real safety hazard there. So I think certainly you've addressed the safety issues first, but by the same token, I think that I would also be thinking in terms of building in sections because solving three out of four problems in one section doesn't necessarily gain you a lot and you're in and of spending substantially more long-term.
Were you able to see any signs of movement in regards to, say, those brick ties being rusty today, walls are expansion, any bulges in the walls where you can see if there's an imminent danger from a safety perspective that these walls are going to blow apart other than when you're inside the wall seeing the rocks? And you can see deterioration there obviously.
Right.
Did you see any, was there any of that?
I did, I did not see any evidence that the wall is moving out of plane. There's fairly substantial evidence that it's moving in plane and that's the movement that you would expect in a brick veneer wall. And, you know, in the sense that you do see locations where ties are bent laterally, you see locations where things have shifted relative to where they should be in the back of the materials. You know, it falls in that category, the problem is, is that you can picture, we opened up one tenth of one percent of the building and the, the one thing that you did see is the consistency of the deterioration. I think that's where we would start to say, well, if you opened up one tenth of one percent and they're all same in different areas, you start to really...
Actually, when around the building, did you see any evidence at all?
No, not a clean out.
Falling, leaking out, you know, where those relief joints were, or where the relief iron, where the relief iron was, did you see any movement of those walls that would indicate that the ties are imminent dangers, what I'm trying to ask?
There's localized movement around the relief angles and that's a lot of the time rust packing and you tend to see it around the ties themselves or where there is shifting the brick outward. The thing you look for in a case like that is not that the wall just slowly leaps off the building, you know. What generally happens when you do get a failure of that type is it starts to peel at a roof or a corner of the building where the wind tends to be concentrated.
Do we see any of that evidence at all?
You don't, but you don't typically get more.
Make sure you use your microphone. Make sure you use your microphone.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, it, it's one of those categories where you don't typically see a lot of movement laterally until it goes and then it goes. And that's what, that's where the concern comes from, is just that it becomes very, very difficult to assess on...
Yeah, no more questions too in regards to the relief angle that's there. You know, three quarters of an inch back and in some cases it might be a quarter inch out. Have you ever seen a metal building put up where that relief angle, if you took a plumb box, three quarters dropped it, it would be right on from, you know, length of the building, top to bottom? So when these bricklayers are working, they're going plumb because their work's going to be seen, that metal's being hidden. Have your thirty-five years, have you ever seen a building that precise metalized in terms of relief angle?
I used to always, and I ran a lot of jobs, I ran one masonry job that had one point three million brick on it. I had a hundred and fourteen bricklayers on one job. And I always got a survey from the, from the structural steel contractor on the job on every building as far as the face of his relief irons. And then we would drop plumb box on corners and control joints. They have a tolerance, exactly like you're saying, they have a tolerance, but it's the superintendent's job on the site to make sure everything's correct prior because two wrongs don't make a right. When you cover something up...
And as a mason, you're going to run that front of that veneer plumb. And if that metal sits quarter inch out or three inches, three quarters back, I mean, at that point, you're either weld or cut or you're moving on.
And I'll, just to comment on that, so generally when we're doing that on a modern building, all those angles are designed to be movable. So they're all set up on a slide, slotted all in the angle and as you're going, you're adjusting it to, you know, I mean, you're not going to bend it too hard.
Even the ties are that way. I mean, the wall is a pie over, sometimes it's got two inches and sometimes it's hanging out to the edge. And a good mason would bend that back or cut it off, but in some of the evidence you see where the rust is going through.
Well, the problem with that, the problem with the ties, yeah, the problem, the problem with the ties were actually the wire that they laid in the blockwork and the length of the face of the panel that came out where the tie hooked in, those lengths should have been adjusted around the building because every, there was cavities. I looked at the original drawings and the cavity changed a couple of different areas, but they never changed the backup wire. So what happened was when they went to put those ties on, they were all the way out to the face of the brick. And what they did was they bumped them and bent them to the left or the right because the tie in, so it would actually be a little behind the face of the brick. But none of that, that was not correct.
But most of the damage we're seeing, do you agree to say that a large percentage of it is from water? Do you agree? Water's causing a lot of what you see there. I mean, you're not seeing a wall move, but when you open it up and see the brick tied, destroyed from some of the water. Looks like to me there's not a lot of meat holes, caulking's horrible all the way around. Most of the area you opened up, near a caulking joint, which was, you can see gaps in it and water had poured in there for quite some time.
I'd actually go further and say that yes, the water is causing a lot of damage, but the thermal movement of walls is causing just as much. You know, and the bump outs of them, there are those lintels that are very dramatic where the block in the classroom is broken. That's all driven by the wall movement from thermal movement and things like that. And so I think I would put the type of damage in different categories, but I think there's equivalent amounts of damage.
I have one question on the recommendations and, you know, excuse me if I'm, I do not know what I'm talking about, so. But I guess a lot of the replacement had some stainless steel, which I equate to being really top of the line. I mean, you showed that galvanized piece which was well-preserved. Is it less expensive to use galvanized than stainless for us?
What I'd say is keep in mind that when we talk stainless and Roger was referring to a drip edge, it's a piece of sheet metal, maybe an inch wide, and it's just at the front edge of the brick. So as your flashing comes out, there's a nice clean piece of stainless that brings the water out and drips out of the building. Yeah, not talking about stainless in any of the structural materials, that wouldn't make sense, but the drip edges are sheet metal.
It's roughly a dollar a linelat foot. It's three inches and then it has a half to three quarters of an inch angle on the front of it. And we'd have a membrane flashing that would come down the top of it. So it's really, it's not, if it was angled, if it was structural steel that was, that I would have called out or being structural steel or stainless steel rather than the galvanized, absolutely, you're a hundred percent right, it would have been ten times the cost, but not, not the flashing.
Galvanized is standard for exterior walls and schools and done dozens and dozens.
Is there a way to just get water out, do part of like, you know, another meat holes or apartment to get the water out of the building that goes in? Is there a way to, you know, either one, do work to stop work from going in, or two, do the work to get the water to come out as opposed to, seems like doing it all is stopping both, is one more important than the other?
No. And, you know, I was looking for an easier answer for that, the short answer is no and I'll explain why. So if you were to just put flashing in the building, then the problem you're never going to get away from on this building is that there is no air moisture barrier on the block itself. And so the path to the flashing is not great. You know, some of the water will come through the brick, stop at the insulation board and drop the flashing. Some of it will go through the joints in the insulation board because they're not concealed up, get to the backup block, there's no barrier there, so that's not going to drop to the flashing. So in a, in a new building, the answer would be all of those would be barriers to get water out. In this case, the flashing is going to hopefully catch as much as possible, but then when you re-point and, you know, whether you went as far as a repellent, you're trying to keep as much out as you can and then try to catch as much as you can, but there's no solution where we all of a sudden have a hundred percent solution to water migration in this building. I mean, short of the extreme of pulling every brick off the building, we're doing a front hook.
Your point is that you do all the work, you can't guarantee we're not getting the water.
You're going to get a lot of it stopped. There is no hundred percent, right? In this case, short of sort of the nuclear solution, it's all brick and block.
Okay, I guess we're, as you know, we're in the midst of our budget discussions, so it'd be nice to work with a number, if we had to break it up, like you said, do everything completely in one area. You just say the word, the damage is the most egregious, which sounds like it's the water, I mean, the gymnasium part section. If we took, and I'm not exactly sure how they asked the question, but if we could break it up into pieces and do everything for that, on that face and that section, you know, what number could be put to it to get us, get that, get that started? Yeah, I know I'm putting you on the spot, I'm not, we're just... Yeah, I know I'm putting you on the spot, and I'm not, we're just trying to get a budgetary number that we can discuss amongst ourselves, because between now and the end of next month, we have to present to taxpayers what their, you know, what their bill is for this.
I understand, like, the dollar value of a, like, a project like this, and the estimate that I put together for all the repairs, I use prevailing wage rates for this area. I didn't use, you know, standard, like, our wages that we would have, I used prevailing wage. And that's typically 20 to 20% higher than non-union wages, but anyhow, like Josh was saying, if you're going to do a section of the building, you have to be ready to answer the questions from the parents, because you're going to have a big bill that you're putting towards one section of the building, and you still have the exact same issues on the rest of the building. The structural part, in my opinion, would be, like Josh was saying, the ties on the gymnasium, I would cut off any questionable life support, life safety condition possible in that area. But I don't know if, I mean, I can easily separate the building cost-wise per section of the building without any, it's no problem, that's the way I actually set up my estimate. But to say one part is more important than another, I really don't, I don't think it's my part to say that, but what I would say is, I would definitely take care of the ties 100%, and consider all the work at the relief irons, because it is, there is movement, there's slight movement, but it's not drastic, like Josh said, where an area is way out of plane, but you can see where it's slight on angles, and that's some of the reason why some of the masonry is out farther than the relief iron, or the angle is out farther than the brick's back. I may even have found one area where they cut the brick, they thin the brick down just to get by the angle. So I know I didn't answer your question, but I know I can separate it by sections for you, but as far as a priority, if I got into a section of the building I would want to do from the top down, because then I'm responsible for that, or that contractor, whoever does the work is responsible for it. If you only do part of it, and you're still answering questions to the general public wise, water gets still in, is still coming in that area of the building, it's going to be hard not to sit there and have it under your face. I sat on boards, I mean, I sat on a lot of boards, and I was always the one that was up there, and they always asked me, I know you're good at throwing darts, because I was good at dart shooting, but you're good at catching them from 40 or 50 people, so it's just, you know, it's a situation that I wouldn't want to be in.
Well, in all reality, you probably will not have students in that building for a few years. So as of right now, that building is due to be shut down, there's no more students at the end of this school year. And as Mr. Thompson said, he's developing a couple of different ideas for us, and how we can retrofit the building to perhaps maybe lease some of it out. So would the work prohibit us from leasing part of the building out at all?
Well, I think the key here is that I'd be happy to be with the administration and come up with some options for how to break the work up and how to phase it over a period of time. The one thing that Roger pointed out to me as we were working through this is, you'll see some of the dollars on here, what we like to call general conditions, and for things like site repair, and scaffolding, and mobilization, there's probably 10% of the cost here was on a per-phase kind of, might not be the whole cost per-phase, but as you know, when you bring the contractor out, is then they set up scaffolding, and tear down scaffolding, and mobilize, and demobilize, and clean up the site, and leave, it's a lot more efficient for them. So it's, there's, the more of it that you do at a time, or a whole facade at a time, then I think that that is the most cost-effective way. So I think Roger's giving us, Roger and Josh are giving us good advice here, is to take whole areas, we could try to identify which facades are the most critical, and work together with the administration to determine where you have opportunities for generating revenue in the building that would require repair work to occupy the building again. That would be acceptable to the board, we would be happy to meet with the administration and come up with some options for moving forward, tying into your budget.
That's the margin initial plan, I mean?
I gave you a proposal to do that. So you have that proposal already. We had, we were partway into a mechanical assessment, which I think I have enough information from them at this point to understand how to break up the building into phases. So, but I can review that with you again, but you already have a proposal from me to do some pre-schematic work.
I think it's good, like I was saying, when you look at a budget sometimes, you know, what you want to get, so we obviously need, we need to be dry, first off, we need to be safe. So as we go through these things, like removing all the loopers, it'd be a nice thing to be able to bring a fresh air, and maybe it's not a necessity to do right now, just to pick one thing. The building's built to spec, no doubt about it, and we could put flashing down in weed holes for 100 years, however long flashing's going to provide, and it's worked. Today's technology is obviously better, okay? Like Indian, I was a mason, too, I did sell marts, I was down, similar background as you, I was a former for a large commercial blade company, so very familiar with both of those things. We never put an Indian in anywhere. I'm not suggesting that it's not better technology today, but maybe we don't need an Indian today. So when I look at this, I look at it and I go, wow, there's a lot of water in there. Caulking's been open for a long time, so you're going to get massive amounts of rust, and I see water damage everywhere. So is it possible for you to go back? I'm not speaking for the board, but this would be my recommendation to this board, is say, go back, sit down and say, let's stop the work from coming in to gaping holes, let's create some opportunity for weed holes to come out, so if there's not enough weed holes in the area, let's put some weed holes in, or where that one flashing is, where it's, flashing above it. Maybe not do so, it's a sensitive word, but maybe cut that section out and put a piece of flashing in with weed holes. That works, we know that works, we've been working for hundreds of years, so why not, you know, can you come back with something that's a little bit more reasonable, and I say reasonable, I think it's very reasonable, good, great price for all the work that's being done, but maybe we can't afford Cadillac, if we want to get the building to where it's not being damaged. All those corners that we talked about in previous presentations, we were told that was by freezing, building froze, we didn't have that kind of movement or structural effecting. So, you know, all that brick sitting up there without that relief, the relief angle, it's called a relief angle for a reason, it's to relieve, it's not to hold all that brick there. That steel building wouldn't be able to hold that second floor, and so by putting a membrane in there, it just wasn't done years ago, it's probably done now for good cause, less than fracture. We're not seeing that kind of damage to the building, maybe we don't want to touch that right now, maybe we save that for another day. Yeah, it'd be great to do it all at one time, cost-effectively, if you look over 35 years or 40 years, if you have to do it 20 years from now, it would be better to do it now. But it may not be needed. Is there anything you guys could do to look at this so that we can say, how can we get this in our budget, make the building safe, okay? The walls are expanding, and it's a safety item, that's what we wanted to, keep the order out, and hit the order out, type of thing, sort of the way you go back and take it here, is that, come back to us with an alternative to this, to where it's not so expansive, versus, again, taking it in seconds, that's just saying, okay, take $2 million, divide by 40, do 500, 500, 500, 100.
Well, this is why I'm saying, I think it's time to look at some pre-schematic options, and look at those schematic options, and see how can we break the construction up into parts with the most important stuff first, and get you to the point where you can effectively occupy the building with a new use, whether that's to put the building back into service as an elementary school, or some alternative adaptive use. So I think it's time to do that, is to package these things up. You've seen a lot of numbers, but, you know, and I'll give you another example that is not masonry-related, and that is the automatic temperature control. We all know that the building needs to have the automatic temperature control improved, and a major renovation of the building would have that in it. Unfortunately, without someone occupying the building, the automatic temperature control means that if it fails while nobody's in the building, unless you have alarms in the building, then Mr. Blaken builder is not going to know when the things start freezing up in the building, if the heating system fails in the winter. So, you know, there's some other concerns here, even with the building vacant, is to put the building into a condition that it won't suffer from accelerated deterioration from frozen pipes, freeze up of the heating system, or from a frozen up by univentilator when you're not in the building, or masonry deterioration from water emissions.
That's something I got.
That's something different.
I'd like to say something. You know, and I know, I've been told before, it can't be done, and I haven't really got a good reason, but I really think the board needs to, you know, this is all great, and we're trying to think of how we can piece in all this, which never works. But what we need to do is see what the debt service would be on like a $5 million note for this building, because we're going to dance around this problem, like, we've been dancing around the problems, this building has been neglected for years, and this board needs to see what it would cost for like a $5 million debt service, for however long we can carry it out, so we can see that we can do this masonry, we can do the HVAC system that I talked about. Otherwise, we're going to sit here and continue to waste our time for another three hours every time we talk about this building. Bottom line is, we've got to sink money in this building, we really need to know what that debt service will look like, and how that adds on to our budget, because we're just spinning our wheels here. And bottom line is, this building needs to be rehabbed, it can't sit vacant, you're going to run into some act 90 rules within the community for an abandoned building, that's only going to be complated. You're going to run into problems there, or we're going to run into problems there. The best solution is, we need to see what we could do with the most amount of money we can do in a debt service, and fix this building up, and then either utilize it as a school, or whatever else, but it's our building to fix, that it has been neglected for years, I know because I lived behind it, and it's a shame that it got to this condition, but it's, we inherited it, instead of doing what other boards have done, we need to do it right. So, but until we see that number, but I think we need to direct them to give us the number of what that would look like, you know?
I believe, I believe Mr. Small did provide us with the debt service numbers for by the million. Mr. Small, can you bring that again? So, yeah, so we'll send that again, but we did get the number, so you could see how many by the million, how much that would add to debt service, so that is out there. Whether the board actually decides to take the loan is a different topic, but that number is out there for board members to look at, and we can send it out again.
We can have that again if you'd like. Sure, I did.
Are there any other questions for our engineers and architects in the board? About public, any public questions? All right, thanks, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the superintendent's report. We have a discussion on elementary staffing. So what I have, I'm going to pass around.
We have, I think, on agenda later, student governments, students, just give you the quick report out for the year. Would it be okay if we put that up on the schedule?
It's not my meeting.
Mr. Raskin, would that be okay?
Only for you, Mr. Knight. We can do it for anybody else, but for you, we can get the student government report, and they can get home and get to bed, so they can get up right in the morning tomorrow morning.
Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Raskin.
You can bring your advisor also.
Look at all, look at all you learned about masonry.
Very interesting. Thank you, Mr. Knight. So first, I'm John Ho, I'm the senior board president. Actually, you're one of the big events that have gone on in high school since the last time we talked. We had a very successful winter pep rally, I just want to thank you to Mr. Schmidt for emceeing our winter pep rally, and our fall pep rally, it was a really great job having all the sports. We had a spring spirit week, we did green for Earth Day, Beach Day, Class Color Day, meme slash party day, and Blazer Day. Next up, we had student government scholarships, so the application for June 20th, and our scholarship committee hiring, and we've been on three seniors that will be receiving the scholarship, that'll be given on our own scholarship night. The election was May 8th, going to start at 8:00 AM and then at 7:00 PM. Our new junior school board rep that you'll hopefully see next year is Austin Longen, and I brought with me today our new president, Julia Leon. We also had a food services committee meeting with Mr. Christ, the head of food services. We had a very good discussion about student feedback, and what they liked about the food, and things we'd like to see, and we also talked about how we can spread the word to students on what is a lunch, what is classified as a meal, how they can make their lunch more affordable, and, yeah. Musical was April 13th to the 15th, it was current, we had a great turnout, despite some of the setbacks, it turned out to be a really good show. We had the community event, student government's part in that, we had to communicate a lot of important information about the organization, and what was going on during that day to the students, and that got some good reception. And we also had Mr. Van on April 27th, we found a Dutch chapater, so I have Mr. Van. Lastly, I'd just like to thank the high school administration, school board, Mr. Harris, shortly, Mr. Bailey, our advisor, for always helping us get our stuff together, and, yeah. So, you know, look at this meeting, it's part of Mr. Knight with the good old, "Go Blazers!"
Thank you, ladies, I apologize, I should have had you up sooner, so. Wasn't Lou Kefner, was he, was he king, what was he, he was something, wasn't he?
He was homecoming.
Homecoming king, well, those Kefner boys, they really, they really get out there, yeah? They're good.
Okay, back to the number six on the agenda, the superintendent's report. We wanted to have a discussion tonight for elementary staffing, for some of the new members of the board, every year at this time, the administration brings for the recommended staffing, classroom average size for elementary. So what you have before you is what we have. On the left box is 2017-18, that's where we are currently. 18-19 is what is recommended, and to the far right is the change. Total teachers right now in K through five, we're looking at 58 teachers. For next year, we'd be at 57, we have one retirement, which we're looking not to fill. There has been a question about monocracy first grade, 2018-19 for next year, where we have an estimate of 210, currently we have about 190, 191 students there. We always add at least about, we always add at the minimum 10% going into first grade. Currently, that number is, I believe, it's about 214 to 220. So we want to keep that number at 10 sections, and not reduce it to nine because of the range that we use. So the range that we use for first grade, first to third, is 20 to 24 students in a class. If we go with 10 sections, you can see that gives us an average per class of 21. If you go with nine, it takes it to 23. However, we generally see an increase above our 10%, and we would be over their recommended classroom size. So if we went with nine, if we added a few more kids, we would be over, and then the administration would be coming back to the board saying, hey, we have too many kids. However, with 10 sections, we could comfortably, we hope, absorb any more over that 210 that comes in, and we think we would probably end up maybe around 224, 225. But we always staff conservatively with that number, and we add 10% onto that. That's the only estimate besides the kindergarten, but for kindergarten full day, we know we have two sections at 15 each max, and then the rest of the kindergartners, we kind of, we track over the summer until the start of the school year. Do we have any... Do we have any, so, the recommendation from the administration is, we keep staffing the way it is with the one retirement, and we go from 58 to 57. And I'll be happy to take any questions.
Where's the retirement grade?
I believe it's fourth grade.
Fifth.
Fifth?
Eighth.
So, I thought we were sending, wasn't, okay, so we were, how many, we were dropping two then? Is that what? I'm trying to look at my numbers here, so. I mean, so we're still sending one to be a special ed coach slash teacher, right?
Yes.
So that's okay, so we got 10, 10.
So.
So, third, third and fourth are each dropping one, right? And then, but we have one retirement, so that other one drop is going to the special ed, right?
Right, because of the realignment of the grades now, this is the final year, well, next year, we actually can see the results of it. So, currently, we have grades in different buildings. Next year, they'll be in the same building, so we just divide that number, so much simpler. This is where the cost savings comes in, so through retirements, this is where we are.
So, the center one looks right, the one to all the way to the right, if you add the teachers you have listed for MEC, it actually adds up to 26 and you have 25 there, was there a different adjustment that you were intending to make, that you changed your mind on?
My mistake, I had nine there. I was playing around with the numbers, the spreadsheet, because we look down the bottom, it says nine to first grade, nine to 23, 10 to 21.
Wait, you want to stay with the recommendation of 10, so it's just 26 total?
Yes, yes. I was playing around, that cell wasn't linked, so the middle is what I was looking at, I was playing with the first grade nine, there's some formulas in here, it's in Excel. There's some formulas in here, but I put the note down the bottom. First grade at nine section goes to 23, which is fine, which is in our guidelines, however, we anticipate getting up to about 220, 224, which would put us out of our guidelines.
I think that makes sense. And for kindergarten, the numbers that you have in here for the current year are just the same numbers as last year, so what will you have some idea of how many kids we have enrolled for kindergarten for next year?
It's ongoing. I think I looked at it, was it 150, I think, correct? 150, I looked at it last week, so if you're saying 158 right now?
So historically, do we know in July, or do we know in August, or do we not know until the first day of school?
First day of school. I mean, April is probably the first week of school.
Okay.
But we, but we do have a good idea, I mean, parents, we do open houses in enrollment periods, so we report back to the IU, and administrative tracks where we are.
So I am going to, you know, push back a little bit on that first grade, because I think the 210 is a good, I mean, a good number. And we're going to 190 now, and historically, coming back to the district, I think that 10% is a good, a good number, so.
Did Mr. Harris already say we're already at 214?
No.
Oh, I thought you said 214. I didn't push a button.
Right now, we're at 224.
For first grade, no, not for current year first grade, I mean for next year's.
Yeah, we don't know what the number is yet.
We don't know what we're going to be, but we feel we're going to be in the 200s.
Mrs. Hunter?
It was 15% increase last year into first grade, so I had 32 students.
Okay.
Yeah, but that, if you go back historically, that number's not always that high, Mrs. Hunter?
That could be the case.
No, 220 is more than 15%. We have 190 kindergartners right now. 15% takes you about 198. So you're, it's a decent estimate.
I feel that the recommendation to leave that extra teacher there could, for that situation we're in at the beginning of the school to here, where we were, we underplanned for the extra kids coming in influx.
And if we do get 15% again, we're going to be at 219.
So, I mean, I think that was fourth grade we had that issue, was that question? Yeah. Yeah, I mean, obviously, you can never, you know, properly plan, but with, with 210, if you had nine teachers, that leaves you six extra spots, is that right?
It's one for, it's a couple for.
Can I say something else about percentage? The percentage was lower, but that was because now I have all of those students for kindergarten. It was lower because Emily had a percentage and I had a percentage, and now I follow them.
Yeah, no, I just, I pulled numbers, Mr. Hurley had provided them, I think, last year, the year before, he did some historical numbers for us from, and I dropped the high and low and took, took an average, so, you know, that 10% seemed to be a pretty good, at least from our past years, right? So, you mean, that, just putting it out there, I mean, the question is, you know, we've had, I mean, we could certainly, if you wanted to keep that teacher, you know, we have a dire need for subs in our schools, I mean, we used to have teachers that were on staff full-time subs. We don't have that anymore, we have, we had to bring in outside, outside sub-service, which is hit and miss. So, just started out there, there's other ways we could use that teacher.
I had a question, and I could be confused, so I put that out there. You said we're having a teacher slash special ed coach?
Yes.
I thought last time we talked a different method there, I thought you were talking administrator slash special ed coach.
Not, not an administrator. Oh, no, we are hiring assistant principals, but that's not a special ed coach, they're two different positions.
Okay, because we talked about the special ed administrator with special ed experience, and we talked about administrator with tech, and the word coach was used as like a tech coach, and a special ed coach with that person, but now you're saying we're hiring a teacher?
No. This is elementary teacher only. The people who are in the classrooms who are assigned to a grade, a classroom, nothing to do with administration, nothing to do with a vice principal, nothing to do with special ed. This is just the teachers who, in the morning, greet their kids and teach them their lessons.
Sir, especially the coaches, not, Mr. Raskin, you mentioned.
I'm sorry?
The special ed coach is not one of the teachers that we're, it's.
No, these are the teachers in K through five who are in monocracy and AMD who are teaching every day.
But we, but we did move one over to this job, right? To the slots. That's, I mean, I'm.
We moved some.
So we had, we had, we have 11 to 10 to 10, right? So two teachers are going down in third and fourth. What, one's retiring, isn't one going to that, to that coach slash teacher spot?
No, we have a retirement position available. We have, so, we always have teachers.
Kids moving up, the grades moving up.
Right, so we always have people moving within the grades.
Yeah, right.
And we have that one opening that we don't have to fill.
Right.
So we're using that open slot to provide support for another area.
Right, but.
But this is the classroom assigned teachers, where we, where I present every year and saying, this is the recommended staffing levels for K through five.
Yes.
So it's not assistant principals, not special ed, nothing.
But we do have someone who's moving to this spot, right? Am I totally confused here?
There's, as far as I know, there's no one, and correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, but there's no one moving into a classroom position. We have a.
I thought we were hiring a coach slash teacher for special ed.
You're running, right now, you're running 10 sections in fourth grade, that'll free up, so basically, you went from 58 to 57 teachers. One of those teaching positions will be moved to the special education.
Isn't that what I've been saying?
No, 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 we're not adding.
There's only one going down, and that's the hire.
Right, but we're moving a teacher.
A second teacher.
To this slot, right?
They're no longer being a teacher, they're going to be a coach, right?
Well, it's not, it's not coming for you. The numbers are only down.
Right, it's, we're coming down one section.
Back in March, finance committee, pledge meeting, I was directed to add a special ed position, all of which you want, so I added dollars at that point to accommodate that position, because I call it a special ed position on my grid. I did not reduce any teaching positions, I have only reduced the dollars as a result of hiring lower step as opposed to the better as every type. So, if that helps, I was directed to add a special ed position because that night, the question was, what do you call it? So the dollars are in place for a new special ed position. This is a carryover.
Mrs. Mikowski, and she can correct me if I'm wrong, and the coach is the more valued position, so we didn't, I'm learning a lot, because I didn't realize a teacher, I mean, a coach can't carry a caseload, so right now is, the coach is the more important person, and that's a, is that person, I think it's Mr. Raskin's question, is that person coming from the existing teacher ranks and just being moved into this position? Is that my, did I refer, did I refer to your question right, Mr. Ben Raskin?
Yes.
We will certainly be posting a position, but we believe we have a qualified candidate or candidates within our ranks, and there's some interest there.
I'd like to ask how, since the coach cannot carry a caseload, how is that a more important position to teach at all?
Well, obviously, if I could have two positions, that would be awesome, but if I, but for now, going through some plans monitoring, I really need that assistance to get us through that process. We can look at caseloads and reconfigure and have, last year, I pulled off the itinerant students in grades five, six, and seven, and created an itinerant position, so that reduced teacher caseloads, but an itinerant teacher then can carry a caseload of 50 students. So if we had to look at that, we could look at an itinerant level teacher at the high school, and possibly create a position there in order to support the large caseloads at the elementary level.
So we originally agreed that we needed a teacher to reduce caseload, now we're shipping geared because of this audit?
Well, not only that, I mean, you definitely need support in my department, because in order to, we talk all the time about how district enrollment is declining, but we continue to see the increase in special ed enrollment, but if someone's not there to get into the classrooms to provide support, so teachers both regular and special ed, that's going to continue to happen.
So the audit is not the driving force behind this person being a coach and not a teacher?
No, I had asked for this coach before, before we knew we were going to be monitored this coming year.
How many IP meetings do you attend to?
A lot.
I know. Do you prioritize and only go to the one that's at, or do you go to all of them? My person, I go to all of them.
I couldn't, I could never possibly go to all of them.
Exactly.
And thankful that, you know, the assistant principals at the high school, Jenny and Phil at the middle school, and then the elementary principals, you know, do what they can, but no, I'm only going to the.
You just need an LEA at the majority of IPs.
What's that?
You only need an LEA for the majority of IP.
Right.
It doesn't have to be.
No, absolutely not, I could never give all of that.
So just to be clear, we changed our mind on the teacher or whether the coach, and that, we're now comfortable with the caseloads that the current IP teachers have had?
They changed the classification by it's an RTE or more.
Right.
Just so you're aware, I mean, I was the one who was calling it a test person teacher. Last year's budget, we, it was a coach, and then we wanted to bring that position back into this year's budget as a coach, and I think I wasn't, you were, somewhere in the conversation, we got into caseload.
It was called a coach last year, we had an opening, we had a position, so we had an FTE that we could fill, and the discussion we had was, in my mind, very clear that we were using that position for teacher because of the caseload demands that the current special ed teachers were under. So, and, you know, look, I'm not going to begin to understand what the true needs are, but I just want to make sure, are we, we're saying now that we're going to be able to manage the current caseload with the teachers we have, and then we're going to utilize this coaching position to help with support and also with dealing with the upcoming audit?
Yes. And I'd also like to go real quickly back to what you were saying about using the lower number and going and possibly using the nine teachers in first grade, that would put us above very top of our cap, and I personally have taught first grade for six years, and it is the, especially if you're coming from a half-day kindergarten program, that is a, it's a critical year.
Well, I know it is, but we have our, we have our, you know, full-day kindergartners, so maybe that's paying off, that some of them are, you know. That's the other, I mean, we could, I mean, if numbers do stay down, you could add another full-day kindergarten question, that teacher, just saying.
Yeah, it's just an option, either the teacher and then uses.
Just saying, I mean, you know, we can, but, you know, I'll send out the information I had from Mr. Hurley before about previous years, and what's come up from kindergarten, come back into the district, so you all can see it, so.
So, just to again be completely clear, the elementary station is going to reduce for next year by one, and is that FTE moving to the middle school to help cover the larger classroom around the middle school, or is that being reallocated, or is that going to be a saving?
That FTE was what we were going to use to go into support special ed, because we were coming down because of enrollment, and we didn't need to fill the retired position. So we were going to use that, although there was money budgeted, we had some funds available because we weren't going to fill that FTE for the classroom to go into special ed.
Yeah, so the, again, is the, we had a position last year, we did fill it, right? Now we have a savings of one, so we're going to cover that new position with that savings of one, and then the position that we previously had, we were going to let fall for books.
So we're saving.
I'm just, just making sure we're all the same age.
We're.
Is that, is that?
Yes, we are. Right, so when I went to Mr. Small's, I said, hey, we have someone retiring, and you can allocate those funds to fill the position that you had set aside.
And I'm not advocating, challenging, questioning, I'm more or less just want to make sure that I understand completely what's happening.
Right, and what you have before you with the, the numbers in the middle is what we recommend for the teacher staffing, classroom average size for next year. So we would only be losing the person who's retiring and keeping class size at the lower scale, because we feel that we do get an influx of students, it happened in fourth grade this year, it happened in another class last year, and Melmy's right, now that the buildings or the grades are realigned, she will be getting all the kindergartners, all the first graders, all the second graders, where at AMD, they'll be getting all the third, all the fourth. So, in prior years, it mattered where people moved in. Now it doesn't matter where they move in, because we've erased all attendance boundary lines. So, any first grader now that comes will be going over to monocracy, any second grader will be going to monocracy. So we do risk the fact that if we have students moving in into the community, they will be going based on grade to a certain building, and we can't split them up anymore.
Right, but you may have erased that, but I would venture that if you dug into it, I mean, the folks that are sending their kids to full-day kindergarten are paying for it, so we have to afford that. So I'm still thinking that that's the basis for the ones that go, those are the ones who are going to be coming back, right? So you may be combining the schools, but I still think that those numbers are still, from past experience, are still valid.
If, Mr. Harris, is it, so, I said that for a second, it's still the administration's recommendation that we keep that first grade class at 10 teachers, correct? teachers, correct?
Yes.
There's a strong recommendation?
That's the...
No, let's not put words in his mouth, this is all...
The fear is, we don't... I don't want to come back and go, like we did at Amity, hey, you know what, we had... And that's why in the report you received, there's another page now, it's the enrollment and withdrawal form. That came about... I don't have it here, but you get it, it sends out to you. It's the monthly totals per grade that tell you how many students moved in and how many students left, because that happened over in January, where a former board member said, I don't believe this much of a change occurred. So, we started tracking by building by grade, everyone who comes in and everyone who leaves, and we tracked every student, and we proved that that plus minus was occurring, and it happens at certain points during the year. And it's very difficult to get a qualified, good teacher in the middle of the year to start a class, because it's very disruptive, and we're staying within the class ranges by doing this, and we like to be semi-conservative, especially with first grade, because we just don't know. We know we're going to get a bump, we just don't know how high that bump is going to go.
Okay, so we're pretty much, we're agreed that the middle block is the staffing model we're moving forward with? Is that correct?
The administration is. I'm not sure about the board.
Well, I mean, that's your recommendation.
Yes, yes.
And I think I'm not hearing anybody disagree with that recommendation at this point, so...
Does anybody oppose that?
No.
So, I think we're... I think that's pretty solid at this point. We can stop talking about it and move on.
Okay. The superintendent's report is done.
Okay.
Mr. Rathke, I have a student and a teacher who wanted to go for a discussion of something we discussed in CNI, would you say to jump the line as well?
Just because they didn't listen to me, so we're... As a reward.
As long as our board members don't start giving me the evil eye in executive session when we're here late.
They would have spoken anyway.
Absolutely.
And Breon. And Breon and MacClure. They gave a presentation to us about the connection network. You have a flyer in front of you, most of you just...
And here, I thought they were just intrigued by the board meeting, they were staying.
No. They won't deny that if you ask that.
The students that were there, four juniors here, are presenting the connection network.
It is. You have to get a little closer to that mic, yeah.
We have four juniors here representing what we like connection networks, and we have seen that in middle school, we deal with friendship, we have beautiful presentation, but it's at the back of your brochure. And these juniors were the eighth graders at that time, so really plenty of seeds of passion to work with their peers with special needs and develop friendships, and now that they're juniors, they'd like to see them come about in high school and reach back down to middle school, and they see that further.
So, a group of us got together and we started brainstorming what we call typical peers do on the weekends, and then we came up with these listed barriers as to why the peers with special needs are already not being included in activities primarily outside of school. We have a great network inside of school, but especially with summer coming up, we're trying to get our peers with special needs involved in activities outside of school. So, then that's when we came up with a list of barriers that we went over in our presentation, and then the connections network is going to try and overcome these barriers. So, the first thing that we want to do is, we want to have our social mixer, which is going to be located at the high school, and the point of that is going to be to get to know the students that are at the high school now with special needs and kind of get to know them a little bit on a more casual level, that's not in a school setting per se, and kind of get to know them, branch out, so that way hopefully we can begin to include them in out-of-school activities. So, there are a couple things that we presented the board with, with what we need as far as how we can continue this network. So, that would be, the first thing is the facility fees waived. If you want to propose this mixer, of course, we're just starting, so we don't have any funds or anything, so we would want just a facility fees waived. The network is going to provide all the resources that we want to have this mixer, we just need the facility. And then the next thing after that would be permission to fundraise and other things along creating a network, but the first and foremost thing would be who can have this network pick off on the next.
So, Mr. Rathke, I understand that the rest of the board is getting the quip of their presentation, but it's a very impressive presentation, they put a lot of thought into what they want for their goals. The four things that she just identified that they would need as support from the district, facilities, fees waived, warrants, permission to fundraise, the ability to create an advisor position and approval for the connections network, high school and middle school. A lot of that is long-term and stuff that needs to be discussed and hammered out in the future, but their more immediate need would be if they were going to get started, at least before the school year ended, while they still had kids here that were very excited about the program, and introduce the program to special needs students before they go home for the summer, would be to enable them to use the high school and have that fee waived for June 10th, that's a Sunday ice cream social. That was the... This is immediate need.
Yeah, I think we can put that on the agenda for Monday as a new business and vote on it. I don't see anybody speaking for myself with an objective to that.
Are you saying put on the voting agenda tonight, or...
No, we can do it by first.
Yeah, okay.
Next week, yeah.
Okay.
Everyone's okay with that?
I mean, we can...
We could start planning.
Yeah.
We actually have the whole thing planned. We have the ticket showings, we have our...
Why are we sat at the special but running meeting tonight?
We will let you know, you don't have to stay.
Yeah, I don't think you have any worries.
Yeah.
Thank you, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Try not to get the room sticky.
Thank you so much.
Although I'm sure we'll be invited by spring, right?
And by the way, I'm continuously amazed by, I think, Boo's students are, you know, with our fundraising and our charities, and I think our students show a lot of empathy, and they... We raise some good kids around here, you know, I'll tell you. So, thank you.
Although the students are receiving guidance and assistance from their advisors and from Mr. McKnight, this is their initiative, their idea.
All righty. Let's see if we can pick up a little bit of steam here.
I have no questions on A, on seven A's or whatever.
Well, that's... We'll go, yeah, so, yeah, I don't think A, B is exoneration, another exoneration for C. PASBA dues are, I think, pretty self-explanatory. Anybody have any questions about those?
How did you get on that?
I'm sorry? You saw the Berks Earned Income Tax Attachment. Mrs. Oldson could certainly answer any questions about that, I believe. I will point out that, much to Mr. Suber's chagrin, I will point out that there is a motion to extend his contract, and he is asking for an increase in his hourly weight, hourly wage. He insists that we are one of the lowest in the Fox Rothschilds stable. Although I will share with him, and I'll share with you guys, we... One of the things we did at the IU is we renewed our contract there with Brumback and Nankuso for 140 an hour, so 40 bucks less an hour than what he's billing us, just putting it out there. Let's see here, dental exam...
Well, depends on what's in their retainer, though.
I don't believe... I don't believe they charge a retainer, so it's probably more hourly than Mr. Suber's charging.
There's a lot covered under that retainer, a lot of sense in that retainer.
So, you're correct, you're correct, so not quite apples to apples. Our insurance for our sports coverage is on here, I think that's the same price as last year. We do have a motion to approve for an outplacement agreement. We have employee assistance, we have bank depository approvals. We have monetary disbursements. River Rock lease. So, probably should go into a little bit more detail here for those that were not on the board before. If you looked at the agreement, which is online, you'll see that it's a kind of a convoluted... We get some placements in exchange for the lease here, and you saw an email from me earlier today trying to track down... So, we had the daily... You were emailed the daily prices, the prices that were charged per student, but the current contract also relates to the fact, based on how many students overall River Rock has here from everybody, all the other districts sending students here, is what gets us the number of placements we have free. So, I think we need that number to see how many placements we are actually getting right now, and maybe Mr. Smalls can answer that question, but that should give you equivalent dollar number here. But the past folks on the board here thought it might be just a better idea to have a dollar value lease as opposed to a placement lease.
Do you have 146,000, is that in addition, or is that...
That's converting it from the placement rental we have now to the actually getting dollars instead of getting placements.
So, our 22% of students is equivalent to 146,000 dollars?
Not 22 of ours, are they? No, no, they... Because we're charged, no, we're paying for quite a few here. Do we know how many we're getting free right now?
I'll send the spreadsheet. I need to update it, and I haven't done it yet, but it's up to date, so you can see exactly what you're receiving in the partner system that I referred to.
Oh, yeah.
In addition to the 146,000 payment, it paid, I believe, 41 or 40...
Forty-one and a half percent of...
Of utilities of the building. Nothing else has changed in the lease, the square footage lease is the same, and the utility cost remains the same.
And just for, while we're on the subject, for clarification, because I was looking at our budgetary numbers, I know there's some things that not quite mesh, but they do do their own custodial, right? We don't provide a custodial over there, right?
Custodial for this...
So, just our side of the building, right?
This hallway is a kind of a common restroom area, as far as what's in the classrooms...
They take care of all that, right? Yeah, that's what I thought, okay. Any questions on the River Rock lease? We'll get you the information right now as to how many free placements we get, so you can actually kind of compare.
Just to clarify one thing, the summer cleaning of their spaces, we do with our staff, all the floor waxing and all that kind of stuff.
Okay.
So, there is some expense in the school district for...
But they do the kind of daily, take out the trash, restrooms?
They purchase all their own custodial supplies and their kids actually clean the spaces.
They give them toothbrushes and make them go in there and...
Yes, however they want to do it, but just the summertime deep cleaning is on us.
Thank you. Okay. Then we have... You'll see both in here, the TSA students as well as the bowling students that are going to national as far as potential, some potential reimbursements for them. Certainly, the TSA number, the TSA numbers are what the board has done the past several years. You'll see one change that I had them spell out a little more clearly, was that in the past, if you looked at the past board minutes, it would read for the rooms, $100 per room, four kids per room. So, I just, if you want to put in two a room, that's fine, so I just changed it, I haven't changed it to $25 per night, per person. So, instead of the $100 a night, four kids per room. So, that's really the only change, I believe. Is that correct? Am I correct in that? So, that's what the board has been doing over the past several years. I know in... We've gone back and forth on some of the transportation. There's been some that have been closer, some that have been farther, some that they use vans, they obviously are flying this one, so there's really nothing set in stone in transportation, but it was more the food and the hotel and the registration. Any questions on that? And certainly, the bowling is completely up to the board if they want to support it, they don't, you know, have to, but, you know, we... It's in here as a gesture from the board, since these kids, they get the nationals. There's really, the policy is kind of vague in that area, it's really up to the superintendent, or actually the board in this case, I guess. You know, we do, if our kids obviously make it, if sporting kids, well, there's no nationals for, like, football, but, you know, if our football team makes it to, you know, regionals and districts and all that, we're certainly paying the transport those kids out there, and, you know, usually we, if it's a long distance, we upgrade the buses and provide, you know, usually lunches and whatnot, so.
Just a question on the TSA reimbursements. Can we ever ask them if they prefer to get $25 towards food, $50 towards hotels?
If you're going to throw a monkey wrench into it now, Mr. Scott, I mean, that's...
I'm just saying, like, it's... I mean, I would venture, you guys said they could eat for less than 50, but the 50 towards hotel would be much money.
I would just say TSA, the meals are included at those events, and we pay for them, but you usually, they give you hats, and then you go eat breakfast, lunch, and dinner, so it's a set cost.
So, with that in mind, can we allocate all the money towards hotels?
I mean, they still have to pay it.
What's the side fee?
I don't know. It's probably...
It's less than 50 bucks a day, right?
It might be more.
Really?
For states, it's less, but not by lunch, I think.
Would you like the... Is this the barbed to spend some time that they could... I'm sure happily dig up those numbers?
It was a question, like...
Yeah, no, I get that.
If we had Skyward, we could probably...
I already have that number. We would have had it yesterday.
Now, it might not be the same, they might be on the...
How's that?
Good answer.
Quickly, I'm ready for it.
All right, oh, yeah.
Bring it on.
Well, I mean, we're not voting on it yet, so, you know, if you want to make some tweets, Mr. Scott, for our next, for our voting meeting, certainly bring them out for the voting meeting.
He was a switch, right?
No, I just, I just thought it was a weird proportion of $25 towards a hotel.
Well, I think...
It's 25 per student.
When we first started, Mr. Scott, it was four students to a room, $100 for the room.
I got it.
That's why that number came up, and then $50 for food, so...
I'm just saying, statistically speaking, I have a much better chance of eating for a day for under 50 than I do for staying in a hotel room for under 100. Yeah, but it's $100.
Well, you got Motel Six and McDonald's.
Hotel in Douglasville for $100.
You can, but...
All right, you can.
Yeah, you can.
I wrote an actual hotel.
The rainbow down the...
An actual hotel. An actual hotel.
And you know that.
Uh, the looks of it, I was just thinking, I was just thinking. All righty, we'll, uh, we'll move on here. Uh, Apple financing, uh, for our one-to-ones. Well, haven't got to the end, like, haven't got to R yet. As soon as I get to R, then I'll, then I'll...
Just because everyone else jumped in front doesn't mean you guys...
We have our, our iPads coming up and, uh, we also have, um, Skyward, which you might be surprised when I have a couple of questions. Um, so I was looking at the number of hours we're, we're paying for training. So I can go back to that. Who was, uh, Kathy, besides you, who's, who's using, who'd be using Skyward?
It'd be the payroll benefits. Sorry. You've got the two, payroll and benefits. You've got AP and you've got Michelle and, you know, Mary, you've got like five, six people using it directly. Lisa Kiki and the superintendent secretary as well because of all the personnel that'll be within the HR module.
Okay.
So you've got the entire staff in this area. And then beyond that, you've got training that will go directly for the purchase orders.
Yeah, because they, they, it says that the onsite training is a max of 10 people or they charge you more, uh, for on, for the onsite training. Um, and then we're paying for like four weeks, like, what, like 156 hours of, of, of training? I guess that's what, a phone training or...
Yes. Webcast, webinar types things where they have it on the screen.
But, I mean, you're very familiar with the system, right?
Yes.
Do you think that's too much or not?
I'm familiar with the system. I can, you know, train the trainer as much as I can, but I think firsthand from the Skyward to the, directly to the people that aren't as familiar with it is really good.
So that, that was a big chunk of money, that 150, what was it? I think it's like, uh...
146?
And 18,000 of that is the annual.
No, that's, they had it broken down by the...
Yes.
It was, it was like 27,000 dollars for 154 hours of work training. So I'm gonna say, I mean, that does, that's, I don't know if that's something...
I didn't find any, I mean, the entire process when I went through it with Exeter was very hands-on. You had people, or they, they basically, they set you up completely. So as you're training, you're using your data and you're going through it, I found all of it very valuable.
If you, if you don't use off the training, do we still pay for the training? Paying to be available or is it, you know, the initial training obviously?
I doubt there's any refunds.
I'm sorry?
I doubt, there's only any refunds? I doubt that.
Not the refunds, but, I mean, they're, the, the initial training, um, and then you have webinars and other things. I mean, is all those, you, you're paying for all that whether you use it or not, basically? That's my question.
You're paying for all of it whether you use it or not, but there won't be anything we will not use. I guarantee you.
Yeah, we're, we're paying 37,000 dollars for onsite and web training.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
Even when they were in, when they were in and we actually went through the training, I got more out of them, I got more out of them than what they actually say in the, they stayed extra hours. They were, they were phenomenal when I gave them.
Well, for 146,000.
Okay.
What was the first onsite, onsite one or two? When we launched, when we actually launched the program?
It goes in phases. We're launching each section. Like, there're going to be somebody here during the payroll implementation, there's going to be someone during the financial one, so it's going to be throughout the whole process. You start by gathering the team together and we do weekly phone calls with the program, the person that's in charge from Skyward. They assign one person and then you do your weekly phone calls and you go through the whole process.
I, I think we do, we, we talk about this in fact, I'll, in Atlanta, um, we always consider this to be non-training, having her background, having her background with it.
I still have all the training manuals with the train screenshots, so when they're prepared to send it on to the schools, I have that all designed.
According to them, they, with their deep evaluation of, of our, of our staff and our, our needs, that was their recommendation. So they've already done a deep evaluation?
We're going to video the training, will it have it available later?
Are they, are they going to lie to you then? Screen capture?
Yeah, with a screen capture. Do a screen capture.
Um, my other question was, I saw they had in here a note about offering financing. Did we look at that, spread it out?
I didn't spread it out because I, it's either now or later. I could take it out of this year's budget. I can look at that and see and give the options to you if you'd like to.
Obviously, in, in the proposal, they did, they did mention that they do offer the...
Hey, we're kind of future years' budgets.
Well, I was looking at the future year budget and I really wanted it, so I said let's do it now. But I can actually give you those options if you want to see them.
Just saying, I mean, you know, have all our options, right?
It's already money that took out of next year's budget. Would you have to put it back in?
Yeah, I have to increase next year.
Right, so you mean it's already in there for next year back then?
I took, I took the balance, yeah, basically, I took it out of this year's budget because they're down to money.
Okay, those were the questions I had on Skyward. Although I, oh, before I forget, for Skyward and, uh, the other agreement that's in here with the student, um, okay, and for all our agreements, I, I keep seeing the Burrisborough address for furniture. I mean, how, how do our vendors, all, for those contracts, keep putting that address in there? I don't, I don't get it.
They do deal buildings.
I know, but, I mean, is anybody looking at that when we get the agreements?
I corrected the one-to-one today.
So I think it's in the Skyward one and I think it's in the, uh, that outplacement.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. And app, app one, app one was in it, I don't know, but anyway, so...
Maybe it's assigned.
We should, we should rent space again for admin building?
The same, the business guy's back, so it's stuck with this deal.
Okay. Uh, any other board questions on A through R before I allow the public to flock in? Please.
Well, my question was actually, Amy Hicks, who's a junior at Douglasville, um, on the superintendent's report regarding elementary staffing. What are the current numbers for, uh, fourth grade right now? Fourth grade, fourth, fourth, yeah.
The, the rising class or the one that's currently in?
The current fourth grade.
Current.
Two sixty-seven.
Two sixty...
Seven as of, as of April, end of April.
There's 11 fourth grades that's going to be going into 10 that remain, each of those classes would be a 26 or 27 next year, which is over the recommended limit, isn't that right?
I'm sorry? Can you say that again, please?
But we, we moved the teacher up to fifth grade and that's what, is that what your question is?
We'll, we'll have 11 sections in fifth grade next year.
Thank you. That's all I would need now. Thank you very much. I just wanted to let you know, give you a little background. The 50 dollars a day probably came about because they would have hour-long conversations about what per diem, the national per diem was in the city that the students were going to and looking that up, so I think they rounded it up just to a nice number.
Yeah, we've only, they mentioned names who brought that, the per diem and all that up.
And that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson.
Well, if any of the students happens to want to reallocate the money, just, you know, have them let us know.
Sell their bed for more.
Okay.
I think that really, just make it 75 dollars.
Under programs, we've got a lot of board parents having some graduating kids who'll be signing some diplomas. Uh, we have the, uh, summer band camp, which has been going on for quite a while at the middle school. Uh, we are starting, uh, a summer sports camp, uh, at AEC, which is going to be partially funded by the Wellness Grants. Um, do, do, do BCTC Child Nutrition Program. Uh, and then we're also going to be obviously approving the TSA and bowling team trips as part of our board duties. Any, uh, any questions on, uh, A through H? I did have one quick, I mean, I don't think it's an issue, but I did notice for the summer sports camp, they're taking, uh, check or cash. I guess cash is not, is that an issue or no? Is that good practice? Or should we have it all checks? Is that, is that an issue or not? It's going to the Blazer Foundation, so... Just know what else has an issue with it. All good? Okay. Any other board comments, questions? Public comment?
Thank you.
Uh, presentations by board members. Mr. Wolf, anything on the secretary's desk?
There is a email that I received, uh, from PSBA for voting delegates, um, for the, um, October convention.
October.
Yeah, we, we have to, if anyone's interested, I'll forward the email out to everybody, but, uh, if anyone's interested in attending that, that, um, you know, we can send a voting, think to voting delegates, um, to that meeting.
Okay.
In the past, I know we only had one person that was interested to take it off a day.
That's out in Harrisburg, right?
Uh, at least.
Hershey?
Hershey. I'll forward that out to everybody, but other, other than that, no, that's the only thing.
Perhaps you want to go out to Halloween and Hershey, bring the family out and do some work? Uh, at the IU, a couple of things. We awarded bids for, uh, nursing and fuel. We already commented on the fuel oil bids that came back, which were definitely higher than last year. Uh, we're still working on, uh, getting a new permanent director of technology. Uh, we did approve the, uh, the technology council pool for Sweet Stevens. It's a, uh, for all the districts that get in there, uh, Sweet Stevens provides a, a, uh, a, uh, pool of legal, legal counseling available to all the districts when it comes to technology issues. So we kind of all pool our resources in that category, uh, for legal, for legal needs there. Um, we already went over the renewal of the legal contract, legal contract there and we did purchase, uh, some new cars for the driving instruction, some brand new Fusions before Ford stops making them. Um, and we also are getting a lot of new buses, so, um, anything from BCTC, Mr. Wolf?
Um, Mr. Radkev, uh, last month I was not able to make the meeting and, uh, this is all right, so I was not able to make the meeting, so, um, we don't have a report.
We already had our student government report. Uh, Mr. Drosso, anything on the legislative front that we should be aware of?
Not yet.
Go out and vote tomorrow? Is that what your comment's going to be?
Come out and vote.
Go out and vote tomorrow. There you go. Uh, any other reports I'm missing? Okay, any board comments? Public comments? All righty, we have a couple retirements coming up. Uh, Mr. Miller, Mr. Repko, uh, we have Nancy Hunru, uh, promotions, or rather, uh, all the other miscellaneous personnel items. Um, volunteers, extracurricular, any board comments on any of our big lists here? Uh, do we want to talk? I did hear there was some issue about one of the bowling. Is there, was that rectified? Do we have an issue with one of the volunteers? No, yes? Clearances?
That was the person who's flying out on their own and, I believe it's a parent, wasn't it? It was a parent, so that person won't be supervising anyone but their own child.
Okay, so we're, we're good there?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, any board questions? Public comment?
I, I do want to, well, on Megan Weber. I'll say, I'll wait for the voting meeting. I'll wait, it's good, it's all good.
It's not on the voting meeting?
Huh? I'll wait, I'll wait for the voting meeting.
Okay. Um, enrollment, you have all your, uh, your head counts in there, um, and placements. Uh, any board questions on that? Public comment? CNI, we had a presentation. Was there anything else to report, Mrs. Olson?
Just two things. Um, we, um, spoke about, um, e-performance, um, which is, um, an opportunity for, um, student athletes. Um, they get to participate in a leadership program through the Karen Foundation and it's focused on implementing, uh, alcohol use among student athletes. Um, Connections Network, uh, you heard from Mrs. W and Ms. McNamara about that, um, and the last thing was, we did, um, we have a newer AP class on the AP center. It's run pretty differently than all the other AP classes. Um, we got to listen to e-presentations, uh, one from a group of students and two from individuals. So we got to see what they, uh, put together for their AP e-presenting for a year. So that was actually very interesting.
Okay. Any board questions for Mrs. Olson? Public comment? Uh, Mr. Wolf, I don't believe we have anything from Facilities Finance, right, do we, or...
We, uh, we did meet, we had my report out the last meeting. We haven't been since then, but we will be meeting, uh, Monday, 21st. Um, I'm sure Mr. Blankdiller has some items on there to discuss, so I would be going over, try to put a, uh, some better numbers to the signage option. Um, yeah, we have, yeah, we have school name changes, so we have to decide what we want to do with that.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Wolf? Board or public comment? Are we going to go, we, we had our finance workshop. Is that what you wanted to do?
Budget workshop last week, yes. So I heard that was our, that was in lieu of our finance meeting, which would have been tonight.
Anything you want to go over on that?
Budget, budget, budget. Trying to, you know, look at all the moving pieces into place, so, um, you know, we're doing, we have, we do have a month then to make some additional changes as things come up, so...
We, we did get some detail over the weekend. Thank you, Kathy, for getting that out. Hopefully you didn't spend too much of your weekend doing that.
No comment.
No comment, huh?
Yeah, no, I was, I think it was very helpful and I did raise a number of questions, so I'm not sure that the best way to go about to having our questions answered in the details.
If, Mr. Radkev, actually, he emailed me, you can go ahead and email me anything he got and then I'll go ahead and I'll get back to you. Absolutely.
So the questions I asked, so did I understand your, your reply that perhaps we're seeing numbers in different spots because they weren't recorded by building and now you're trying to get them into the building? Is that, is that what you're trying to...
There's a lot of them that are being recorded by building now, so there's a lot of, um, budget transfers. You've been approving a lot of budget transfers every month and that's, um, facilities. Facilities, that budget, there's a lot of moving pieces in there. Just to get that straight, so you're going to see, if you're looking at it from that detail, remember I still have to go in at the very end when the budget's all done, now that all the transfers and all the account code changes have been made, I'm going to go back through and put it where it belongs, because I really don't want to do that many more budget transfers like I did this year. So I'm going to make sure that it, it matches.
I think a number of my questions did this initially are at BEC, facilities, the cost of line up or staying stagnant, which surprises me.
Yeah, and he left because he wasn't sure at the time that he did the budget, he was not sure what we were doing with BEC, so he left some numbers in there for that.
Yeah, there seems to be quite a bit.
Yeah. And, and, you know, those areas I talked about where, yeah, the, the buildings might be a little different, but still the overall numbers had some significant jumps, you can, let's look at the overall number. So that's where I, I just wanted to drill there, yeah.
And that's where I came back and said, that's where I was moving from this year. Like, if you look in the whole 400 category, if you look at some places were over and some were under, I've been shifting and doing budget transfers all year fixing that. Now, what you're looking at, you're looking at the actual budget, when I give you the budget for 18, 19, or 17, 18, that budget right there is the one after all of the budget transfers. The one they worked with when they did their budget was the original budget, which was something that was put in for last year. So now when you compare it to what I've already moved all the numbers around, that's where I'm going to be shifting the numbers. So when you've been looking at it in 400, it doesn't look like a huge, huge jump in some circumstances, but that's after I've moved the pieces, you'll, you'll see it better. I'll move it, I just, it was getting all the pieces together for what you were looking at was a challenge in itself, but I can... at was a challenge in itself, but I can move it now.
We'd sense that your question had all, so we're not asking the same questions again.
And I did, I sent the response to all.
Yeah, I think when I sent my questions, I sent them to the board.
One question on the 17, 18, is that a budget, a budget that we're looking at, or is it more of a forecast?
It's more of a, it's after all of my budget transfers, and I'm getting it to as close to where we're coming out at the end. I'm trying to. I'm almost there. There's still some pieces, because things come up, but I'm going to get it closer and closer. As you do more budget transfers, you'll see that through June, so.
So while we're on the topic of the budget, so I had a brief conversation with Mr. Miller earlier, and I had, you know, talked to briefly Mr. Matzvi, now he's not here tonight. But I think we would like him maybe to go back and look at, I mean, we are replacing a significant number of computers, and I know he had said in the technology meeting that he was looking at, looking at maybe some leasing going forward next year. But I'm wondering if that, if that really, we should be trying to look at some potential leasing this year, too, if that would save us any money in all those computers.
There's a number of PCs that we're looking to replace, leasing through the personal units.
Absolutely, I agree.
So maybe that might get that number down. And I also, I saw Mr. Blackdiller responded to the lantern fly. I have, I do have a question, and I'm not, I know we're responsible for, you know, maintaining the grounds at the middle school as far as mowing. Does that include spraying? You know, are we spraying the entire park, or is that, or is the township picking up part of that?
According to the license agreement, we are responsible for all maintenance of the park. Includes spraying, replacement of bushes, trees, the whole nine yards. The only thing we're not responsible for is replacement of backstops and the pavilions and the macabre. But mowing, mulching, trimming trees.
As far as, is that in just the quote-unquote licensee area, or is that the entire park?
That's the entire park. The license agreement covers the whole 50 acres, I believe, of the park. So the only thing we sprayed last year was the park. For lantern flies, we did not spray any other facilities throughout the school district. I know we're going to have to this year.
Okay.
Yeah, from talking to many municipalities and other school districts, everybody's thrown a lot of money into it, and in the areas that are quarantined or where the state wants to call it.
Thank you.
I have one question. Just like Kathy. One of the things that just jumped off the page, I mean, is postal budgets went from zero to like 4,000 to 9,000, almost every building. Something happen recently? There was a major change in how we deal with that type of stuff, something additional regarding?
I think initially, the, I don't know, the premise was to put all of the postage into this building, into admin. It's not an admin, it goes more towards the instructional, for the funding purposes. You want to put the expenses where they belong. So what I did was I took it by the populations of the students, and I divided the postage up accordingly. We have a tax thing, where the tax postage for the tax bills go into that tax account, which is in that tab where my, the business office and everything is in that tab. You'll see the tax bill. But all the other postage throughout the district needs to be coded accordingly. And what I did is a percentage, I've always done it this way, is by taking the total amount of students in each of the schools, and I divide it up accordingly.
One of the things that I asked the business department to do this year, besides, well, to get a better picture of what each building costs to run, when we have budgeting areas associated to this building that they're pulling from, it doesn't really give you a true picture. So earlier, I think it was last year, this last, well, this school year, I asked the business office to train the principals on finance and what their building costs, staffing, facilities, everything. So they understand as the building leaders, what it costs when they ask for something. So going forward, when they ask for something, they say, well, I can get rid of this, but I can use this. The same thing we do with staffing. So I would say next year we'll get a better picture, because things are going into the correct or different areas. And then the year after that, we'll see a two, three-year trend, so we can start really tracking actual versus budgeted. But I did ask, I want to know, what does it cost to run the high school? From top to bottom. What's it cost to run the middle school, top to bottom? And that's what we're slowly getting into, where we're seeing these call centers that are here in this building, and not where they really belong.
It's like Rob's Budget, the Assistant Curriculum. There's a line item in there that a lot of stuff throughout the entire district was pulling from. So we've had to budget this amount. Now you see that from year-to-year comparison, it looks almost like he's overbudgeted, because we dropped it down, but you're looking at an actual number where we're coming in, because I've transferred those funds out of there and dispersed it where it's supposed to be throughout the district. So it's getting closer, and I think next year's going to be a truer, more accurate picture as we're getting there. Like, even when I, he asked me to put, if we, let's say we shut down the middle school, not that we ever would, but if we took that offline, what's those costs that are associated with that would go away? Well, there's always going to be your cost with special ed, like, I can't, just because that student's in the middle school right now, it doesn't matter. So I've been funding those to 10 or 30. A lot of that wasn't taking place. A lot of stuff was just going to zero, zero. Instead of breaking it up between elementary and secondary, and until you do some of these PDE reports, that's very important for the state to know exactly what portion of that expense is going to elementary and which portion is going to secondary. So it's been a time-consuming process to get it up to date. But I think I was talking to, I think it was CSIU, funny CSIU out of the cave, but I was talking to them, and they said we were seven years behind. Because some of the changes that I have made and updated the general ledger, it's about seven years. Because I remember making those change when I started at Exeter, so. It's a process, but it's getting closer. But the reports I gave you, because it's such a manual process to put it in where it is, I now have it in the format, and I can actually refill in the numbers. When I'm ready to close out the month, which you'll be getting your reports for the voting meeting, I can re-update the numbers to bring it in closer and show you where I'm going to be moving it to make it a little bit more clear. I figure that'll be something, and I'll update it again the next time I go through it.
Okay. Thank you. Any other board questions? Public comment? Alrighty. Must my check be issued? Trying to instruct you, Mr. Scott, I'll see. That's right, goodnight.
So I guess I would say the biggest thing is that we have quite a few policies coming up on the second reading. So this would be your last chance to ask questions or debate anything going into this and ask anybody, you know, has any other concerns, let it know. We're not meeting in May, so our next meeting will be in June.
So I did have a question, Mr. Scott, on our first reading for Dating Violence. So am I to understand that this is only regarding school-sponsored events or while on property? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah. I don't have it memorized, obviously, but that sounds the gist of it, but.
I mean, we're not, like, taking the place of the parent if the kid has an issue at a weekend with a date.
No, no, it's definitely school function, school-sponsored event, or school property.
What if the problem is with a kid from another district?
I mean, we say with, kid from another district?
So we're at the prom or dance, and their date's from Governor Mifflin, and that's the one who's abusing one of our students. What authority do we have if we're investigating this, or if it brought to our attention? Trying to understand what us as a school district would do, that, I mean, should this be brought, I mean, if it's something like that, should we all brought to the police's attention, and they should, and I don't understand what we would do with a, for a Mifflin student?
I'd have to go back to the reading.
Well, that's why, that's why. Well, this is the first, I read it, but this is questions I had. So this is the first reading, so this is the time to ask questions, right?
All right.
Perhaps this did come up during the committee meeting?
I'm shocked it didn't.
If it's the prom, if it's a prom, the student gets permission to come. They're not one of ours.
Right, so in the saying, what if that's the issue, what are we as a?
I'm just like any other stranger in our building, like, if it was a student from another district who came under school property, just like it was if it was a parent or a kid.
Well, so say it was an event that the kid did not raise the issue, but after the fact, then they come to our administration and said, hey, at this dance a week ago, my date inappropriately touched me, what are we going to do about it?
It's police.
Through the police.
Yeah. And that's, I'm just making sure we're not, as a district, going to be investigating this and taking on responsibility that really we should be taking on. That's my concern.
The theme of it was more informed than was about anything else. Now, I don't think we had any, we don't have any jurisdiction over students from other schools, or just like what we do with the parents, have that lie at a sporting event. It's the same thing. Right. Like this policy, they will rest in principle, but that's to get finished, we'll do it. I mean, teachers are required to report, right? So I mean, teacher notices inappropriate behavior, whether they're dating or not.
That's a separate policy, right? That's a separate policy.
It is.
Yeah. So I just wanted to make sure we weren't taking on stuff that was beyond our scope, that's all. Any other questions for Mr. Scott? Any public comments? Technology committee, Mr. Miller?
Yes, we met last week. Topics that we covered, we covered the financial contract system review, we reviewed the Skyward contract details, recommended it to move forward. Ongoing expenses for Skyward is similar to what we're spending today. Just the initial investment, and we're looking to do that this fiscal year. We also took a look at online payment system, it was recommended by Scott to use MySchoolBucks as a proposed replacement for online payments. Today, we use PayPal. PayPal is a 2.9% fee plus the 35 cents. Online, MySchoolBucks has a higher fee, but apparently it is a much better system that integrates with our backend and it's likely to be used, and it's actually, the cost is actually 3.9% fee. It's my understanding that we spend a lot of labor on backend systems with AP tests and the other things that we collect money for.
Does it integrate with Skyward? Ah, well, then, there you go.
We talked about handling expenses on, too.
Yeah, well, we did. Today, we passed the entire expenses that came down, and if we want to do that for this, we want to encourage people to use the online payment system and really take away the option of anything else.
I mean, have we talked to any of the banks that we had in council to see what could be searched, made about it? I'm assuming, like, Wells Fargo, you sell your Wells, and if you have a relationship with them, you probably can get them, or you see, and as we have bank accounts with this, so do they offer a service similar to that, that we do, but we're not paying fees?
I actually had the conversation with Viss for the credit card, and the online, there's a service that they do offer, and it was comparable to what he's suggesting with MySchoolBucks. So it wasn't.
Similar, and has a relationship with the backend systems.
Exactly. That's the difference.
There's not passing the tax cost on, the thought was, if we're encouraging, we could supplement.
The goal was to get away from PayPal, because PayPal is just a disaster to use as far as passing on and understanding where the money's coming from.
I guess your question, though, is trying to eliminate checks, and is that what we're, the actual processing of the checks? Would that save us some labor, is what you're saying?
Plus, I can bet that Mr. McKnight probably attest, there's employees there that have literally how many hundreds of dollars there, kid dropping off cash, checks, you know, so it just, it would be a lot cleaner, and it relieves somebody from having to manually keep track of that.
And that's what the PayPal is right now, it's just all me.
Yeah, PayPal is. Initially, this would be for the one-on-one, the laptops, so we'd like to get started.
That was a big thing that we discussed with the next year, that it's going to be every student having to, you know, pay that insurance, and it would be a lot easier if there was a clean system for our students.
Might get a little pushback from some folks who don't like to do online payments, but.
And there are those that are checking.
Right, right.
So you're just, you're not, I heard possibly making a mandatory, but you're saying this take away the fee as an incentive, but not making a mandatory. Anything else? Anything else in technology?
We talked about the data warehouse solution that is self-reordered in place, and we talked about the summer upgrade schedule. Scott is planning, they do all of the upgrades for both the routers and stuff getting started. They have busy summer time. The lease, I'm talking about, we're going to make starts this year, 110,000 of the iPads. We talked about the rollout plan, training for parents in August, having a student technology day sometime later, for a street of school, a day to use the iPads. And we talked about the coach, teacher needs for rolling out their class.
Are we getting a little more comfortable in that area?
No.
Okay.
We need further discussions on that, and cyber learning, getting, making sure that if we move forward with cyber, that the infrastructure by Scott ensures that it is high school, it's set up to go whenever we would be, and if Spology actually has a learning management system, we need a learning management system.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Miller? Public comments? Alright, transportation?
We had a meeting last month. We discussed how things were going, adding an extra bus. Basically, it only been in effect for about a week, so it wasn't really much discussed. And we also talked about the number of referrals that are happening on the bus, and possibly sending out with the bus assignment and times the rules for bus behavior and consequences that will follow, to hopefully encourage less redheads.
Okay. Any other questions regarding transportation?
I do. I just had a quick question. River Rock Bussing, is that under us, or is that on their own?
They transport.
But we actually, we pay for it, I believe.
We pay for their bus drivers?
Well, we pay to transport the kids.
Okay.
Our kids are all.
Want to do it?
No, just. Any public comment for transportation? New business, so we're going to need, at the next meeting, need to approve a treasurer for the upcoming term from July 1st to July 30th. I think Mrs. Olson is doing a fine job. Anybody disagree with that?
You're free to disagree and pick your own.
And finally, if Mr. Schmidt's still awake back there. We have a brief discussion on lacrosse, swimming, and tennis. Are you prepared for that?
First of all, I want to thank my supporters, Mrs. Reno, Mr. Ron Landis there for lacrosse. Over in the other corner is Stephanie O'War and Chris Murphy. So they're swimming. Wave. Okay, so has everybody seen the report? Everybody got that? Do we have any questions?
I have no questions. I spoke to Mr. Schmidt. I knew the direction.
I mean, so this, as a point of clarification, so pretty much is it tennis, swimming, and lacrosse that are the only sports that are non-school sponsored, I guess is the, would be the official term? Hockey is not a PIAA sport, so that completely doesn't matter, right?
Correct.
Yeah, so those are the only three sports right now that, yeah.
Yes.
That are club sports, I guess you could call it, yeah.
I think it'd be a good idea that we add these, I think that that will send to us shows. These have been clubs for a long time. The costs for swimming is not that high for the school district, just because uniforms are really kids and caps and stuff. I think lacrosse, what they have donated already, bought for the school, and everything, I think it kind of speaks for itself. And tennis, so I mean, I'm good at adding one over the next three years, or I'd be more just putting them all in this year and getting it over with. That would be my first suggestion to the board, is let's add them and be held with it.
As far as the uniforms go, you mentioned, so I think if I remember what was sent out, we're saying right now, swimming or going forward, they buy their own suits, is that what I'm hearing?
Yes, they buy their own suits and their own caps.
Well, I would push back a little bit on that, right, so you know, we had a long discussion earlier this year about cheerleaders, right? So that how we have not given them any money as far as uniforms, so you know, we discussed giving them a stipend, so if you're gonna bring swimming into the fold, I would think that only fair that you would add money for them too, right?
Okay.
I'm not saying I want to get all the costs on the table here, right?
What would that cost be roughly?
So are those suits typically good for the season, or do they use those same suits for multiple seasons?
Okay, one season.
One season, yeah.
So you'd like me to add them to the uniform?
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, let's make sure, before we have a vote on we're adding, let's make sure that all the costs, right, are truly on the table, so we, you know, we have a tendency to add things, and all of a sudden, oh, you know, by the way, we, you know, we had this cost as well. So I want to make sure that all of the true costs are on the table here.
Also, if you look at the salaries, that's not normally in my budget, you know, but I did add that to all the costs, so I mean, that is included.
I just have to say that, you know, earlier, apparently this year, we cut, we cut out the replacement uniforms for the band because of budgetary concerns, in part because the adding grade on the design.
I think it's completely because of the-
Well, it's, the other problem with the boosters, which I'm not gonna get into, it was a little bit of a few things. It was the funding, how much they actually cost, if I wanna get into it, how much, I think the uniforms were like $68,000. The boosters had budgeted to donate some money, which now isn't available to donate, plus they didn't agree on the, they didn't agree on the the design. But even if they did agree on the design, you know, the money was taken out because of the budgetary concerns. Now we're throwing in all these sports and all these other costs, and it just doesn't seem fair that, you know, we're adding to the sports and then we're pulling back money from the other-
If they become school sports, then maybe the students can be charged fees to play.
But this is, this is, this band uniform, these are for actual, that's a, that's a, it's not an extracurricular, that's a co-curricular.
An add-on, have an add-on?
No, I'm saying, the club teams, do the club team kids have to pay to play in the club team? They don't, we don't charge them a fee.
So the spreadsheet included the activity fee?
That's what I'm saying, like, that's being, it's gonna offset some of the costs.
Yeah, I mean, it's in the spreadsheet that Mr. President provided.
How much of the, how much of the band?
I don't know what the total cost is.
You said it was because of the uniform, right?
The uniforms that they're looking at did have sleeves, so I don't know if you're gonna get a uniform with a sleeve, because it's a, it's a fall-off activity, and if you're looking at a uniform without a sleeve, I don't know what it costs with a sleeve, but that's $68,000.
I think they had like undershirts or something, so they could change the colors around. That was like, that was my understanding, but anyway, it doesn't matter, but the point is, the point is, we had, we had all agreed to that number, and that, the cost of that uniform is more than all three of these sports being added.
Right, and that uniform lasts about 10 years, right? So just keep that in mind.
Well, I mean, I get that number, bring it up the next meeting if you want.
But I guess my point is, these teams already have boosters and fundraising in place. I would imagine that's not just gonna disappear as soon as they become a school sport.
I would imagine it would be tapered off, I mean, you know, I mean, you might like to think that it's gonna continue at a full speed, but but once they, you know, don't have to pay for everything, you're gonna see reduced funding.
And then you have, you know, there are all the other groups, like the junior ROTC, they equally are as organized and well-funded as any one of these groups, and they're not being included either.
Yeah, so we had that discussion.
I'll make a motion add them. I mean, you tell me what you want added in this budget, right now we're talking sports. We can hash it out. If you want, if you want me to make a motion next meeting to add junior ROTC, I have no problem doing that as well.
Sure, why don't we add everything?
Let's do it.
Why don't we add everything? And then the year after next, we don't have any money.
We don't have any money anyway. You know, we brought this up in a discussion last time to discuss at this meeting. If you wanna talk about band, I'd be more than willing to support you on that, but right now we're talking about sports. You wanna get band uniforms, Mike, I'll be with you on that.
I think that Mr. Wolf's point was that, where do you draw the line, right? So I mean, you can add, you know, originally we were asked to add, you know, I think the assumption was made, we were gonna add lacrosse, you know, again, it was an assumption, I think that was number one. But if you're gonna, so if we're gonna bring in lacrosse, then why would we wanna exclude the other sports, right? So now, instead of just adding lacrosse, now we're gonna add tennis and swimming.
Right.
We do own our tennis courts, okay, maintain them, right?
They're expensive to maintain.
Especially if they chip my-
Well, if we do damage them, yes. Actually, considering when you have to resurface the courts, it is a lot of money, actually.
Yeah, I know, we had that damage.
Would we have to do that, even if we didn't have a tennis team, because of that agreement?
Yes.
So that's a moot discussion, because we're having that expense anyway.
Could pay for these lacrosse transferations now, the coaches' salaries, all of the pay now? It becomes part of the budget?
And are those paid for a fun reason now, or do they do it on their own?
They do it on their own.
I believe the transportation might be covered, Mr. Schmidt, is that-
Okay, right now, the tennis, swimming, and the lacrosse are all being paid out of this year's budget in the general fund, and the question was, do I build back who we used to do for lacrosse last year? I haven't, I have the bin boys ready, but I need to be given the total directive to do that. I was told outside of this meeting to do it, but I'm waiting for a general consent or something.
So we're already paying these things?
We are paying transportation, and there are some supplies for lacrosse that slipped into the general fund budget this year.
Was it a question of it slipped in, or was, were we actually paying it, or were we not paying it and it got slipped in? That's the question, right?
We were not paying it.
So we were not.
Transportation in prior years for swimming and tennis, I believe, because Joel brought that to-
Lacrosse was paid by-
Lacrosse was last year?
Was paid by an outside entity.
Last year, lacrosse was paid by an outside entity. When that contract was not negotiated by Rosen Klein this year, Rosen Klein billed us directly, because it was always on the activity, the sports schedule that was being sent to the Rosen Klein.
What, what slipped in for lacrosse?
There's about, I think it's $3,000 worth of expenses, it's supplies, but I'm not a hundred, I didn't document exactly what it was.
Is somebody paying the transportation fees too?
We've been paying transportation fees this year, yes.
Another five.
That's another five on top of that.
Are we just paying for transportation for lacrosse, or are we paying for all?
Tennis, swimming, and lacrosse are all in this year's expenses.
But it wasn't before.
I'm gonna do versus, I'm sorry, so it's already a school sport and paying?
Uh, no.
Not in total, it's not a school sport to begin with. It hasn't been approved to be one, but these are expenses that are within the general fund expenses this year that happen to be there.
So we were not paying them before, and they managed to get in the budget this year, is that a fair statement?
That would be fair.
I mean, so we were not paying them before this year, but they miraculously found their way into our expenses this year. Which, you know, so.
Alright, well, let's talk about, what we're talking about here is moving forward in the 18, 19 budget. What do we want to do with these three sports?
Well, I mean, that's, you know, again, so, so, I mean, if the board wants to put the money out, put the money out, right? So, I mean, I don't, I don't question the, uh, these clubs have done a very good job being out and around, right? I mean, I don't think any of us question the job they've done, or the passion that these student athletes have in what they do, and, you know, that the fact that they should be recognized as a school, as a school sport, right? Question is, you know, we keep spending money on a lot of stuff, at what point do we say, can't do it?
I've got a real sarcastic answer to that, I just don't wanna say it.
I mean, I, I mean, you said sarcastic earlier, you said, just spend it, you don't have the money anyways, so might as well spend it. So I don't quite understand.
Well, yeah, that was a little sarcastic, but I'm saying, if, if we know a cost of something, we want to put it, let's at least put it in the worksheet and look at it. We literally, we have the costs in front of us for these three sports, and we can add that in the budget worksheet. That's not hurting the budget drastically. If somebody wants to bring up, if somebody wants to add in next meeting, the cost of what the band uniforms are gonna be, then bring them forth and put them in, and let's see what it looks like.
At the very least, can we, you know, if you're not, can you consider subsidizing portions of the cost?
You could, I mean, we're already subsidizing transportation this year.
Well, I mean-
I believe if we bring them in as a sport, we have to support them the same amount as we do the other sports, right? Is that correct?
Well, I mean, as Dave said, we're paying transportation, they're not a sport, so we could continue to pay the transportation costs.
And keep them as a club, and keep them as a club.
I mean, there's options, it doesn't have to be all or none.
Well, I mean, it still comes back to being fair, you know. I'm not trying to judge between who's has more merit than, does lacrosse have more merit than swimming? Does swimming have more merit than tennis? I mean, I'm looking at them equally. If you're gonna add one, you might as well add three, and then, you know, our ROTC and everything else.
Again, it doesn't have to be all or no, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. You know, it could be, hey, we're gonna continue to pay transportation costs, or we're gonna continue to pay, you know, league entry fees, whatever. I mean, I would think that any club sport, their plan is to continue, whether we help them or not. Helping them would be great, right? I mean, it's better than nothing.
We'll splash, maybe there's rental fee?
I give them a huge reduced fee as it is. If you want me to keep losing money over there, sure, but they already, they already get a reduced fee, so if I need to reduce it next year because they're in a pickle, then I'll talk to them next year, but we charged them last issue, and we did the year before, we understood they had a need, and we're trying to work with the kids. If they come back to me next year and say, hey, we can't afford X amount of dollars. If you wanna know, I didn't make any money off them, I paid for my staff to be in the pool zone.
Did we ban the curriculum? We banned part of the curriculum, correct, to get credits, and that was in an effort to get more participation. That was how, that was how it pretended. And then as such, we lost all the fees that we would collect from band, correct?
Yes.
So we made that decision.
Under this bar, if you put them in, then yeah, I'll waive the fees, fitness and splash. If that's gonna be a yes, oh, for you, then I'll probably add them on.
I'm just saying, like, I don't like the whole, like, comparing the other groups, but if we're gonna compare, then let's compare. And then the reality is that we're not bound to pay the whole thing, but we, we could pay for something. If you guys are, if there's a mixed opinion on whether or not we should pay for anything, and it's gonna be a no vote, well then, is there a way to, could we pay, again, continue to pay transportation costs? Pay entry, league fee entries? I mean, that makes, that makes it much more palatable for those clubs.
Comment?
I have a comment.
Our superintendent has a quick one.
I just wanna say that the three sports we have listed, the travel, the transportation, we, I believe we should take on just to get our students to and from the events safely. The equipment that they're using, let me back up, the entrance fees, we should take that on. The equipment that these students are using are very individual. I mean, my daughter does lacrosse, she has her own stick and her type of equipment that she likes to use. My son does swimming, I'm sure he does not want to have a brief from another young man. He's gonna buy his own and his little hair bonnet thing that he wears. I don't know, the cap, the cap. Tennis, same thing, the students own their rackets, they string them a certain way, they're going to have these items for a long period of time. I now have a lacrosse net in my backyard. So I believe that we should cover the transportation, the entrance fees, and support them that way, since we're already doing it anyway. If we can get the swimming fees reduced, or that's a plus, and I believe that all three of these groups have great booster organizations that either help with the coaches' pay, keep with the fundraising, they have annual events, I don't think they're gonna drop off because they no longer have to pay a van fee, they're gonna use that to support more of the kids entering the programs. That's my three cents.
We bring them on as sports, we're responsible for the coach, right, correct?
I'd say we only cover some of that. Now, we do-
No, that's what you're suggesting, but I'm saying, if we bring them on, then we're signing up for-
I mean, it sounds like Jim's recommendation is kind of a hybrid, that they still will not be officially-
A sport.
Sanctioned school sports, they still be a club sport, but we would basically be giving them a stipend to cover transportation and entrance fees, is what-
That, that, that's if, that's if we don't have the five people that wanna make a full-time sports.
I'm in favor of that, I think some of the costs, the assistant coaches, I mean, are there some of the things that we fund or we're not funded? It sounds like we're already paying-
The first question is, if we have five people that wanna do it, who wanna make a full-time? And if the answer is no, then we start talking about-
I'd be in favor of actually voting on whether or not we wanna bring them on as sports, and then if that fails, then we could move on to some other- I would also point out, I think that if they did bring them on as a school sport, or three school sports, they would come completely under the umbrella of sports. boosters for fundraising, is that correct? Or would they still be able to do some of their individual fundraising?
No, I mean, each, each team still, still is able to do individual fundraising.
Current, independent of swimming or other sports boosters, lacrosse is its own separate organization. They do their own.
And if they became a school sport, would they be able to continue to fundraise on their own?
Yes.
We have to...
Well, see, the new...
We have to...
My name is Ron Layz, I'm from the president of the club. I would have to go back to the board and, and, and I would have to have a conversation, because currently, right now, I'm not prepared to do any further with the boost. We have put $10,000 aside for the boys lacrosse. We have spent thousands and thousands of dollars on new uniforms, new equipment, which the school will not have to buy for the next five to six years. All right? Now, we're, we are basically putting $10,000 away for getting through the cost. All right? And the school takes it. All right? Now, we are, I haven't, I don't have any kids in this school. I haven't had kids in the school in junior. May committed to build this organization, I went through the 60s. Five students, this year, over 200. And I go to youth and high school. I need to build and base a feeder program to make it to the high school. This sport, like every other sport, draws people, and it will, once we get better. Your gate fees, snack bar, will be enough revenue to pay the, the coaches' fees for the next, everything. So, what I would propose is if you take it, that we would run our own snack bar, and all the money would go back in to whatever fund you want to help support our lacrosse sport. Doesn't matter. So, we're willing to do that, but I cannot run, we cannot run this organization, because I would have to charge $175 registration fee to every player like we do now in order to keep the program running. Okay? The subsidized part helped out a lot this year, but it's not enough to make this sport big one. And it's, I, I would have to go to the board, and I would have to, I would have to find parents that want to get involved and, and pick this up and keep running it, because I can't guarantee that. I can't. And none of my boards wants to guarantee that. So, you need to let us know what you want to do, and I have to present it to the parents and see how far they want to run this program. Because I'm retired, I've been doing it for five years, and I need to retire. My wife will doggone... Regardless, um...
By the way, I, I do, I do appreciate everything, you know, you know, what you guys did for building this, you know, this, this club up. I, I don't appreciate the fact that the board is subsidizing anyway, and we were not aware of that.
Sorry?
We were not aware we were subsidizing this year. The board, that was completely shoved under the table, and we had no clue, which I don't appreciate.
No, I agree, I...
So...
That's my question, how? How's that happen? I mean, I, I, I'm just thinking else in the room. How's that happen? I don't know how that happens. How does, how do I all of a sudden be funding for that project? I like the sport, by the way. I'll be all right with saying, I like sports. I like that they're really good for the kids and all that, so I'm not against the sport. I'm more concerned about how does something slip in to our budget? Any kind of answer?
The Rosen Klein was submitted. They get a schedule on a weekly basis for the transportation for the sports. They just assumed because it was on there and we were paying for it, because it was sent to them and presented from the school district. These are the trips that we have, this is what we need. The business office, we're new. I mean, transportation, Jeff wouldn't have been able to nail that one down. I don't think he even knew which sports were ours and which ones weren't. Me and Lauren were just going through it last week, or a couple weeks ago, just trying to nail it down. Even our website says lacrosse is a sport of ours. It's not clearly defined. It wasn't until this whole thing started coming up and lacrosse was a no, and it was like, wait a minute, we're paying for that. And then we found out we're paying for tennis and then swimming, so it just unraveled from there.
So, but, but back to Mr. Scott's point, I mean, if we have five yes votes, I mean, we could just stop the discussion now, and, yeah.
I just had a question. I'm confused by what the gentleman from lacrosse was saying. Is it all or nothing? Is that, is that your...
No, 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 no. No. Whatever you decide, I, I need to make sure that we have a future, because I currently can't, it's hard to word for lacrosse right now because I already know this year. We're in transition, we're 501(c)(3), we're a non-proffile organization. And we're in the middle of transitioning, breaking away from high school and youth, okay? We're giving youth our non-proffile organization, so they can keep continuing the feeder program. If we have to help subsidize the school, I have to make sure that we have people in place to run the snack stand, to run registrations. See, that's another thing, too. If you tell them to subsidize it, are you going to charge a fee? Because I'm going to have to charge a fee to pay for it.
So, typically, the way most of our sports work now is, you know, we'll, we'll pick up the cost of the uniforms, which you guys have new ones, so, you know, right now, we have them typically on like a five-year cycle, give or take, where we purchase, we, the school would purchase new uniforms down the road. And, you know, like, if there's, you know, line painting, or if there's, like, you know, we buy baseballs, basketballs, volleyballs, you know, but, you know, if, if there's, obviously, we're not going to pay for, it sounds like there's individual, what do they call it?
Sticks.
Sticks, thank you.
Players get their own...
Yeah, so players would get their own sticks, you know.
Well, that's the only thing with, I don't know anything about swimming, and I don't want to take up your time on the project. We, we, we just purchased 50 uniforms, okay, which we are willing to donate to the school if they need to perform. That's a $12,000 cost, it's going to, it's going to, it's going to be there for a little...
So, as an example, the football team still fundraises. Football team pays to have all their helmets refurbished, and, and...
Exactly. Now, I can understand that, and I agree with that, and they should. I really personally, as a, you know, as a resident of Canyon Boone, I think your fees are cheap for your sports and everything else. I think you should increase those fees for a job. I really do.
They, they were higher, we had, we had a long conversation about that.
Yeah, well, I mean, I, you know, we charge $175 a term, we're nice and serious about lacrosse, and they pay it because they want to play this super organization. So, I mean, but that's a whole different ballgame. I want to get back in track. Whatever we decide, I need to make sure that I can hold up our end. That's all.
Well, I, I don't, I mean, this is still the committee of the hall, we don't necessarily need to vote on this right now. We'll vote on it next week. So, if board members have some other questions in between, maybe some other board members want to politic, and...
What are we going to vote on next week?
Well, I mean, I, I think it's, it's either, I think the initial vote should be all or none, right? So, if that vote fails, then we could go into, if you want to do a hybrid piece, but I, and I'll honestly say, I think either you bring them all on, or you don't, right? That's, I mean, I can't see bringing one sport in. I don't think that's fair.
That's, that was my point.
So, I, I think, you know, you vote, bring them all on or not. If they're, if you, if the vote is no, then, you know, someone can make up a motion and say, okay, do we subsidize?
Shouldn't we know that now, let them just get to see if there's five, because if there isn't, then you don't have to waste all that time emailing back to the board for...
Well, I mean, I, I, I think some, I mean, I won't speak, I mean, I mean, some, I know, Mr. trouble seemed to be, like, he had some questions, some, you know, he may be thinking, thinking it over. I mean, are you prepared to say yes or no right now?
Right now?
Or are you, are you still thinking about it?
My, my only question is just, is there a ballpark idea where we're talking? Are we talking $5,000? Are we talking...
Well, the, the spreadsheet...
Send the email.
The spreadsheet that, that Mr. Schmidt provided was a total cost of $30,000.
But that's on account coaches, right?
Now, I mean, I, I think the coaches seemed a little light on salary. I could be wrong. I didn't really get into it that much. You know, the gate money, I, I've never attended a lacrosse match, so I don't know how many students turn out for, to watch a lacrosse match. I mean, I know, certain, certain sports do not draw much of a crowd, some do. I don't, I have no clue, I can't, I can't speak.
We never, we argued about that years ago. We never wanted to have, like, football, say, well, football's self-supporting because of the gate. If, if all the, all the fees and all that for the gate always go to the general fund, and you just pay for it.
So, if you take gate fees out, then, then that would, that would raise it by 2,500?
Plus, we still, we still paint the lines on the field, and there's a cost for the paint, and there's a cost of the time. Yeah, well, once we do, yeah, well, that's, we already have that in the budget, but, yeah, once the new field is, once, when we get to the point where we order a new field, that will have the lines already in it. But for right now, it's an annual process, and we have to, we have to do that. I don't know how many, how many times during the season do we have to repaint the lines?
Once a year for about $2,100.
So, you know, right, Mr. Smith's numbers was 30, could it be 40? Could it be somewhere in between? But at least that gives you a ballpark, I think, you know.
I do have a question. Sorry, it's a long-term fundraising minute. Seems that everybody gets a policy right, fundraising boosters, and any club in agreement that's a good sport, you have to follow the same rules as everyone else, right?
Yeah, you have to provide Lauren with financials. It's in, it's actually in the, 9/15 is the, is the policy that covers this, and it's actually one of the ones that, that Mr. Scott's committee must revise.
Mr. Smith...
You have to provide the insurance, you have to provide, like, your budget, you know, audit, there's, there's a bunch of criteria.
As long as everyone is aware of that and agrees with that, that makes sense.
Mr. Smith also did not include, I mean, right now, they're, like I said, we, we probably should have some kind of stipend for the swimmers with uniforms, and I, I don't believe he, because the uniforms are new for lacrosse, he didn't have that money in here, but that obviously would be added on down the road in, in a few years. We got to pay for new uniforms for them as well, so...
Yeah, we got, got to be real careful with the fundraising, because, and how those funds are being sent into sports, because you have a male side and a female side, and they, and that's where we almost, that's where we almost got in trouble a couple of years ago. So, we want to make sure that they're always, you know, funded about the same. And you can't always tell what somebody, you know, you might get a donor and say, I'm going to donate $10,000 to the boys lacrosse team. That, that's a huge problem.
So, are we, are we okay to wait to vote for that one week?
Well, that was the plan. That was always the plan.
Yeah.
But I don't know if Mr. Schmidt had anything else to add.
Well, on a positive note, our softball team won tonight. 7-2 over Mifflin, they play tomorrow night. The first time in school history, our boys lacrosse made districts. They came up short tonight, they haven't played the number one seed, but still, you know, stepping in the right direction. So, if there's anything else you guys need from me, let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Any public comment on our discussion on treasurer or sports?
Lauren.
Why am I not surprised, Mr. Smith?
Lauren, bring us your 67 bucket, Mr. Miller. As far as we were talking about budgets, the only people that submit that to the district are the 501(c)(3)es, sports boosters, music boosters, BTC, as far as I know. So, like, swimming, tennis, they fall under, well, now they fall under the districts. They used to be included under the sports boosters. So, if they were to come back in, you would not get individual budgets from them, because they're part of you. Their fundraising would come in through the athletic department into their accounts that they have. So, you would be able to see what they were bringing in, and what they were spending, because I think that shows up...
That's Fund 29.
On that.
Why would this, why, no, so I understand, why would these three sports be different than all the other sports?
Because we no longer carry all the individual team sports. They have, they were all turned over to the business office.
They turn, they turn back, right?
Oh, gosh.
No.
Gosh, you really want to, you're, you're, it's a joke, right, Mr. Miller?
No. One of the things, one of the issues I have with not bringing lacrosse, swimming, and tennis in, is that you create this ambiguity. You're sending students out to represent Boone. You're saying, go out there, play hard for Boone, but we don't pay for anything. So, are they really representing Boone? And God forbid, as somebody who has used the secondary insurance that you guys provide, that you have to provide, which works great, what happens to these students if they go out and get injured while playing tennis? Are they a Boone student, or are they a club student who's over here that we have really nothing to do with, yet we told them to go out and wear Boone clothing and represent us? So, you create this world with no definitive answer, that, to me, opens up a lot of possibilities that could be negative. How do you enforce the coach to follow the grades? They're not being paid by you. They're not an employee of you. They're being paid by the club. You know, those are some of the things that I think should be weighed over $50,000. Is it worth it? Or do we just bring them all in? And if we say we're going to have these sports, or we're going to have this club, we're supporting it to the best that we can, and we're going to be out front. If we can't support it, then we figure out something. They figured something out five to 10 years ago. Pay them back and say, you're part of us. As far as the swimming uniform, we could buy warm-up jackets that they could wear over their bathing suits, and that could be part of then Boone's property. Tennis, they wear T-shirts. The sports, the girls would probably want to have their own. Boys could wear shorts. So, you can figure out a way to make it, make it equitable to what you currently have. So, just, there are options out there. And on another note, I am no longer sports booster president. As of July 1st, I have decided I put in enough time, so...
You actually found some, found a replacement, Mr. Smith?
I did find somebody. So, Mr. Girbert will be stepping in, so...
You did a fine job while you were there.
Thank you.
I'm Chris Crepper, 305 Buckhead Lake. We started the swimming this year as a real league sport. We had six meets. We did awesome as a small team, no support. Our budget is low. We don't, we have the pool that we use, the suits we all buy on our own, and I just want to say it's a low budget. The kids did great. We made it to states, districts, they did great. And college, just look at that. We have three kids going to college that are going to swim, and it's a great opportunity for swim scholarships. I went through that in there, too. That helps us a lot. If you help us with the pool, that would be huge. We still have the fundraisers for...
The vote goes that way, and maybe next year for...
Only, only one, only one year, Mr. Girbert, only, only one year?
Did you say, yeah, no, you said two?
A fun, Dexter's got to eat.
Actually, Mr. Girbert, so we, since we have a water problem at BEC, we could just put a pool, a matatorium in there, and...
I thought that, too.
Since you mentioned pool.
We're, we're not buying Maple Springs. Don't even go there.
Nice try. We appreciate your support, and we like to move our work into a team. It just makes us more valuable as a team. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I just wanted to say thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming out tonight and staying so late. Wait, wait, wait. Okay, any, any new business, any new business files? I did have one that I, this one, wanted to, I asked a couple weeks ago, and I saw it, I'd bring it to administration again, since we had a discussion earlier about facilities rentals. I'd still like to get that informational sheet back again, where we know who's requesting, you know, facilities usage, and who's paying and who's not paying. We used to get that as information only, and it kind of went away, and there was an issue with trying to, what, things weren't talking to each other, but if we could figure that out, so we could get that information again, please. Any other new business on it for board members?
I have a question, my activities, wasn't there a trap program that's looking at using our facilities? What ever happened there?
They went somewhere else. They were offered it for free.
Free, free's better. Any public comment on any issues at all? All right, meaning it's true.